Mr. Shores Proctor?
Here.
Mr. Bernard J. Lundley Jr.?
Here.
Mr. Adrian Dance?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Dance, if you will read us into close?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that the school board go into closed meeting as authorized by Section 2.2-3711a1 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment.
First of all, she's your second.
So.
Mr. Lundley, are there any...
Aye.
Opposed?
So move.
Move by Mr. Pierce, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Proctor.
As required by section 3.2-3712b of the Information Act, a roll call vote will be taken to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open reading requirements under the act. And two, on such public business matters as were identified in the motion, by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session by the board. Prior to the vote, any member of the board who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of one and two, as shown as where, shall so state the same, indicating the substance of the departure that you have referred to, is taken place. Does any board member wish to respond? Hearing no response, I will now take the four-year roll call. Mr. Stephen L. Pierce Sr.
Yes.
Mr. Halvey Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall Pritchett.
Yes.
Mr. Corey Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Joyce Proctor.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard J. Wadde Jr.
Yes.
Mr. Adrian T. Grant Sr.
Yes.
Thank you. There's no motion from the closed session. At this time, we would move to the motion to adjourn from the closed session.
So move.
Move by Mr. Mau, is there a second? Mr. Lundby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good evening once again everyone. The time now is 6:03 PM. We would like to call our regular school board meeting to order Ms. Davis if you would call the roll please once again.
Mr. Stephen L. Pierce Sr.
Here.
Mr. Halvey Miles Jr.
Here.
I'm sorry, senior.
Senior.
Mr. Kendall Pritchett.
Here.
Mr. Corey Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Joyce Proctor.
Here.
Mr. Bernard J. Lundby Jr.
Here.
Mr. Adrian T. Grant Sr.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Board members, we move to point eight, approval of the agenda. If there are no changes. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Pierce.
Move by Mr. Pierce, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Tucker, Ms. Tucker, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next we move to the B, moment of silence, Ms. Davis.
The following ought to be remembered during the moment of silence. Ms. Stacy Perrin and family in the passing of her aunt, Deaconess Eva V. Moore, on Wednesday, February 26, 2025. Ms. Lorraine Brown and family in the passing of her husband, Evangelist Ernest Brown, on Friday, March 21, 2025. Mrs. Debbie Holloway and family in the passing of her husband, Mr. Gary W. Holloway, on Sunday, March 23, 2025. And the family of Mr. Jamar Johnson, Petersburg City Public School employee, in his passing on Saturday, March 29, 2025.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I would like to add a community name, Basilla Evans, to that. That passed away recently. She is a big advocate in the community.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Next we have hand.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. I am so excited. This is always the best part of our school board meetings, where we get to recognize our wonderful students here in Petersburg City Public Schools. And so tonight, we'll start with the recognition, our recognition of our wonderful students who participated in our VSBA, our Virginia School Boards Association art contest. And so we have several students who did a wonderful, wonderful job and were selected, and we want to recognize them for their efforts. And so we want to start with Ms. Adriana Elias, Elias Valdez, if she is here.
Hi.
Hi sweetheart, come up, yay! Wonderful for her participation in... Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Go see how it come around to you. Alright, thank you. Stand right there sweetheart, so everybody can see you. So turn around. Thank you. Our next student that we have, we want to recognize, Mr. Armani Calacut. Is she here? Alright, sweetheart. Congratulations. And our next wonderful student, we want to recognize for the VSBA Student Art Contest Recognition Award, Emanuela Gibson. Congratulations to our wonderful students. We want to take a picture with you. We're so, so very proud of you. Thank you for your wonderful drawings and art. You all were simply amazing. So we're going to take a picture, so stay right there.
For those of you who don't know, that art was put in competition with 18 other school districts. They did a really good job. They did outstanding job. Give them another round of applause.
Alright, now for our next... All right, now for our next set of students. So we are so excited for our next, I think we have our. Our wonderful students here in Petersburg City Public Schools who have been selected for the All District Band Omega Psi Phi Scholarship Competition and selected to participate in the Longwood University Honors Band. All right, are we ready? Sorry, Siri. Are we ready? Congratulations to the Longwood University Honors Band. Tuba Logan Perram, ninth grade. Yay! Yes. Malik Johnson, 11th grade, tuba. Yay! For our next set of brass winners for trombone. Nevenan Parrish Junior, ninth grade. Next for trombone, our 12th grader Azaria Jarman. Our next trombone winner, Autumn Johnson, 12th grade. Now for our next set of brass winners for trumpet. So now we have Jayden Glenn, ninth grade trumpet. Next we have Satoria Wheeler for 10th grade trumpet. We have some exciting, excited family members in the, in the audience. We next have. Jai, Jai, Jian, Jai Yian, sorry. Sweetheart, please tell me how to pronounce your name. Louis, 10th grade. Jaiyan, thank you, Jaiyan. Louis, 10th grade trumpet. Thank you. Next for my, one of my favorites, as I was a clarinet player. All the woodwinds in the house. Congratulations to Naomi Green, clarinet, 11th grade. For our next set of woodwind players, flute players. So our first flute player is Carl Nguyen, 12th grade and parents. Yes. Next we have a flute player, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly sweetheart. Dejon Bailey, 12th grade flute. Next, I think I have Shania McKeever, 12th grade flute. And last but not least, for the Longwood University Honors Band, Janaya Johnson, 12th grade flute. Again, everyone in the audience, congratulate our Longwood University Honors Band members from Petersburg High School. And if we have our comms team to take lots of pictures. Before our students leave. So, Ms. Von Gare. There she is to take pictures, our Longwood University Honors Band. Well done. All right, thank you. Again, thank you. Congratulations, students. Yes. All right, so moving right along to our next set of fabulous students here in Petersburg City Public Schools. Congratulations to the Delta Omega Omicron Omega and New Psi Chapters of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. Presents the Omega Talent Hunt 2025. Winners, Satoria Wheeler, trumpet, 10th grade. Okay, Satoria, thank you. Got it. Congratulations, Satoria. Our next brass winner for trombone, Autumn Johnson, 12th grade. Congratulations. These are our winners from the New Psi Chapters Omega and New Psi Chapters of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. Congratulations to our Petersburg High School brass winners, trumpet and trombone, Satoria and Autumn. Congratulations. Ms. Von Gare? Thank you. You're standing outside the door. Congratulations. All right, thank you. So school board, school board members, we have yet another set of students. Congratulations to our Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association presents the 2025 District Three All District Band Winners. So to start, favorite instrument. Congratulations to Naomi Green, clarinet, 11th grade. So Naomi's not here, but we are very proud of her and congratulations to her on this honor. And next we have another woodwind, Ms. Carl Nguyen, 12th grade flute. Congratulations sweetheart for your winning the Virginia Band Orchestra Directors Association Award for the 2025 District Three All District Band Playing the Flute. Congratulations. Well done. Will our wonderful band director please stand and come to the mic and introduce yourself, and let's give him a round of applause for the work that he does for our students.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Brown, Chairman Pritchett, Board, everybody here today. My name is Mr. Boswell. I'm the band director here at Petersburg High School. And I have the honor of teaching these phenomenal students. Can we please give it up for them one more time? So I'll be very brief. I just want to tell you a little bit about the three things that they're being recognized for. First thing, Longwood's Honors Band. And you might ask, how do you get in the Honors Band? So what happens is that Dr. Waddell, which is the professor at Longwood University, he asks all the local high school directors to nominate between 10 and 15 of your top students. Now typically when we have top students, it's usually 11 and 12th grade, but I have the honor of having two 10th graders and three 9th graders to make the Honors Band this year. So it ended up being 21 different high schools with over 250 students participating in this band. So it was amazing. We had director from New York City named Mr. Wyatt. He was a guest composer, and these students were able to perform his original composition for the first time. It was the world premiere at Longwood's Honors Band. Let's clap it up for these students. The next thing is the Omega Psi Phi Talent Hunt. And what that is, is that the fraternity has community outreach, and one thing they like to do is to highlight the talent in our area. So our area consists of Colony Heights, Hopewell, Denwitty, Brunswick, Appomattox Regional Government School, and Thomas Dale, Petersburg. So these students went and they did solo work. Now if you need anything to ban, you know that it's one thing to play with a group, but when you have to play by yourself, there's nowhere to hide. So these students had to get out there by themselves, and this is something that they did in addition to their schoolwork. So we worked on our spring concert stuff, winter concert in the classroom, so this was something that they had to work on their own on. So these students worked hard and diligently, and we had two students to get second and third place, get a cash prize scholarship, and that was Autumn and Satoria. And the last event is the All District Band. And what that is, is like the playoffs for band students. It's like the championship. So it's the best of the best. So what happens that each band director, we are the judges, we are behind a blind curtain, and we pull the students out and they audition, and we can't see who they are. And then we get together and pick who the best students are. So this year, we had two students, and it is very, very competitive. I mean, students are having panic attacks. I mean, the students are, they have their personal train, personal trainers, and private lesson instructors. They are helping them to warm up. They have to do 12 major scales, sight reading, chromatic scale, and prepare piece. And we had two students that actually made the band, and that is Carl Nguyen and Naomi Green. So again, I want to commend these students, and I'll give you a quick story if I sit down, to tell you how hard they worked. Last week was my birthday, last Thursday, and I said, well, I guess I'll just go home and just relax. The students said, can we please have practice? So they actually want to be here. They want to get better. So if they want to get better, I'll sacrifice my birthday for them. Thank you guys, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell, for your work and all the sacrifice and time that I've seen you in the summers, hot days, cold days, out there with our students. And so thank you for your leadership and support of our, our young people. And thank you to Mrs. Glenn, the assistant principal, who I know supports this effort. So we just want to just thank you for your support. Woo, right there in the back. Thank you so, so very much for your support. And congratulations, students, and let's keep showing everyone what Petersburg is made of. So thank you, congratulations. So for, oh, sorry. And thank you, of course. And so again, let's have all of our parents of these amazing students. If you're in the audience, parents and supporters, please stand. Thank you so much, parents. We could not do this work without you. And thank you so much for allowing your young people to be involved and engaged in something as wonderful as the band. They are making us proud. So thank you, thank you, thank you to all of our parents. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Congratulations again to everyone on behalf of the school board. Ms. Brown, next we will move to 2C.
Thank you, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. I'm excited tonight to yet, yet again bring one additional member, newest member of the senior cabinet team here, which is my direct team as superintendent. We have a new hire that's coming to Petersburg. And we'll give our students a few minutes to, to file out, and then we will bring Mr. Martinez to the, to the podium. Thank you again, parents. Mr. Brown, you can ask the rest of our cabinet to come to the front as well, if they're out there. Thank you. All right, thank you again, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. Again, I am excited to welcome to the podium our newest member of the senior cabinet team here in Petersburg City Public Schools. Mr. Jay, we call him Jay Martinez. Giovanna is his first name, but we call him Jay Martinez. He is the newest member, and we're excited to have him here in Petersburg. And so I want to give him an opportunity to introduce himself, tell a little bit about his experience and why he's excited about being here in Petersburg, and we're excited to welcome him. I think he's been here for about 10, eight days, nine days, give or take. So we're excited to have you on board, and he has hit the ground running. So Mr. Martinez, we will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Pritchett, esteemed members of the school board, Superintendent Brown, our senior cabinet, valued community members, and our greatest asset, our children. It is with great humility and enthusiasm that I stand before you as the new assistant superintendent of operations. This opportunity to serve, to serve the Petersburg community and its school district resonates deeply with me, reminding me of the values and close environment of my own upbringing in Atlanta, Georgia. My professional journey has been shaped by a foundation of leadership forged through honorable service in the United States Marine Corps. I have been privileged to train, mentor, and serve alongside extraordinary Marines and fellow service members in numerous campaigns and combat zones. These experiences have instilled.
I'm sorry, Ms. Martinez, hold on one second for me. I want to make sure that everybody's able to hear you. Thank you.
These experiences have instilled in me a solution-oriented approach and a commitment to unwavering dedication. This district need for a decisive and strategic leader aligns perfectly with my background and expertise. My educational background includes a master in civil construction engineering and management, and MBA in operations and finance management. And I'm currently completing my doctoral studies at San Diego State University, where my research focuses on school safety and security, specifically in the mitigation of active shooter threats. In my most recent role as chief operations officer for a large school district in California overseeing more than 50 schools, I successfully delivered projects to include the largest elementary school in California, completed under budget and on schedule, as well as another large elementary school project completed nearly three years prior. My responsibilities encompass managing teams that address all operational needs for a district serving over 30,000 students. The warm welcome I have received from the Petersburg community has been truly remarkable. I'm eager to collaborate with the subject matter experts within the senior cabinet and across all departments to ensure the operational excellence and safety of our schools, and our esteemed board members, local and state officials. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. We're excited that you are on board, and thank you for introducing yourself to Petersburg. All right, so thank you again, board members. We'll move on to our next recognition, which is our School Library Month. And so what we want to make sure, if you look up at the, at the screen, we have our proclamation for School Library Month. And so. By the virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution of Virginia and the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized School Library Month this month. Whereas the quest for knowledge by the school students in Virginia is stimulated and developed using educational resources and services provided by school libraries. And whereas school libraries play a critical role in tackling unprecedented learning loss in reading. And whereas school libraries provide access to a wide variety of necessary educational materials, such as books, magazines, newspapers, digital resources, online resources, and information databases, and the technology needed to utilize these resources. And whereas school libraries open the doors to new ideas, information on our past, and provide learning activities designed to enhance reading motivation and establish the information literacy skills necessary for lifelong learning. And whereas the full potential of school libraries is dependent upon trained professional Virginia school librarians whose varied skills assist. whose varied skills assist teachers and students in effectively using this wide range of information resources; and whereas it is fitting that special recognition be given to school libraries and the role of school librarians in education throughout the Commonwealth. Now therefore, Glenn Youngkin, I Glenn Youngkin, or Governor Glenn Youngkin, does hereby recognize April 2025 as School Library Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. So thank you once again on helping us to celebrate the recognition of School Library Month. And do we have any school librarians in the audience? Well, thank you if you were watching. Thank you for your service. And we understand the importance and the essential role the school library plays in the lives of our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Board members, we move next to number four, our superintendent and staff reports, 4A, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. We have several, at this moment, we'll start with our personnel agenda. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve-
Let me back up. I'm sorry. We're at the approval of consent agenda. It's my thought.
That's okay.
I thought we were at reports. Okay. We're at the consent agenda, 3A personnel agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. At this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the final personnel agenda with item number seven as a correction, not resignation, but retirement. And so, given that change for item seven, from resignation to retirement, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the final personnel agenda with those changes dated April 16, 2025, as provided. Next, we'll go to section B, approval of the minutes. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the minutes of the 218, 2025 regular meeting, 325, 2025 School Board Disciplinary Committee Student Hearings, 427, 2025 School Board Disciplinary Committee Student Hearings, and 49, 2025 School Board Disciplinary Committee Student Hearings, as provided. Next, for the approval of consent agenda, item 3C, donations received by Petersburg City Public Schools. If you'll take a look up at the screen, these are our March 2025 division donations from the dates. Please go back one slide. Oh, thank you. That's fine. Perfect. Thank you. From March 14, 2025 to March 31, 2025, these are our division donations. So if you take a look, thank you for making it a little bit larger. A little bit larger. I don't know if they can see them. But what you can see is we have been given, if you can make it a little larger. Scroll over a little bit more.
There you go.
Just scroll over a little bit more. Can you scroll over just a little bit to see? Okay. There you go. So there he is. Okay. So if you can see that we are getting donations with, from, to different departments. And so we have Family Engagement Department. We have Ms. Glasgow, the cosmetology teacher is getting donations. We have Mr. Jimmy Terry getting donations. And if you could take a look at some of the donors to the right, we see Mount Bolivet Baptist Church, class of 1981, Petersburg High School, I'm assuming. Then we have PSG Clarence E. Scott. We have Mark Matthews, chapter of the Virginia Buffalo Soldiers. We have Carmen Sita Stewart, who's providing a check. And so you see that we get lots of different donations to Petersburg. You see it in the form of in-kind donations. And you also see it in the form of money and cash. And so these are the different departments that are beneficiaries of these donations. And we want to make sure that we are good stewards and that we are providing information each month. So these are the donations for the time period of March 14, 2025, until, if you scroll down, Ms. Yates, I know, March 31st. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Board members, you've heard the recommendations from the superintendent's motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Move by Mr. Miles, the second.
Second.
Ms. Proctor, all in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. Now we move to number four, the superintendent and staff reports, 4A, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. We have several guest reports for our superintendent's staff tonight. So we will go with 4A, which is our March 2025 monthly budget update, given by Mr. Matthias Gray, Dr. Matthias Graywood, our chief financial officer.
Good evening, Board Chair Pritchett, honorable members of the board, esteemed Petersburg city residents. I'm here to present the monthly update for the budget for March 2025. My name is Matthias Graywood. Slide two, okay? Our general fund had an original budget of 12.3 million, supplemented by 1.5 million in nutrition funding and 1.9 million in capital improvement funding from the city, totaling 15.7 million. As of March 31st, we have received about 12.67 million, with remaining balance of 3.03 million from the city. That's the revenue piece. Next slide, please.
Ms. Yates, if you can make, now you can make it a little bit smaller.
I'll wait, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay. Fiscal year 2024 compared to '25, we have received 40.89 million for 2025 in instruction. We spent 28.92 million, leaving a balance of 11.97 in instruction. Administrative and health services increased to 10.39 million, with 6.9 million spent. Insurance staff and student support leave in a balance of 3.49 million. Transportation for pupils, crucial for student commutes, was allocated 3.8 million, with 2.86 million spent. Operations and maintenance saw significant investments at 11.9 million, with 7.71 million used and 4.1 million remaining. In terms of technology, which is a priority for us and continues to be one, we have 2.98 million budgeted, 1.96 million utilized, and 1.02 million remaining. Overall FY '29 total budget stands at 69.26 million, compared to 58.06 million in FY '24, of which 48.34 million has been spent, leaving a balance of 20.9 million in that fund. Next slide, please. And for food services, grants and grants, budgets and expenses, school food services was increased from 5.1 million, with a 3.5, 3.15 million spent so far. So the budget was 5.1 million, 3.15 spent so far. For instruction, we received 18.18 million, ensuring program expansion. Admin and health services, transportation and maintenance budgets remain crucial for district-wide operations. With 96.53 million allocated across all funds and 64.98 million spent, we retained 31.55 million in available resources to be strategically utilized for the remainder of the fiscal year. Next slide, please. Any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Miles?
Oh, can you go back to Fund VII? Because it seems like we have a lot left there. Are we going to be able to spend that money before, before the time period run out on there? That's a grant, right?
Yeah.
It, it done been done? It's just not on here? That's what you're saying?
No. We don't have to spend everything that's in that fund by the end.
So we have time?
Yes.
Oh, we have more time? Okay. I just want to make sure time didn't run out on us. We had to return.
No. Fund VII is not supposed to be spent by all of, or its entirety by the end of the fiscal year. We have an opportunity to spend some in the new one.
Or grant, so we could have until September to spend some of these dollars.
Yes.
Is that correct?
So we good?
Yes.
Any more questions? Okay. We can proceed to the next slide, the Head Start update. And the Head Start update program continues to provide early education support. Salaries and wages in the federal funding were about 939,000 allocated. We've spent 615,000. Free benefits were 411,000 allocated, 243,000 used. Classroom supplies and other expenses are monitored to optimize spending efficiency. Total federal budget was about 1.4 million, which 905,000 has been spent, remaining 494,000. Next slide, please. For the non-federal share contributions, people transportation received 252,000, ensuring accessibility for young learners. Donated goods and volunteer services contribute significantly to the program. Our total Head Start budget stands at 1.75 million, of which 1.13 million is spent, leaving a balance of 615,000, ensuring that students receive quality early childhood education experiences. In summary, our financial, uh, financial planning aligns with the mission to provide high-quality education, ensuring transparency, fiscal responsibility, and strategic growth for the Pittsburgh City Public Schools. I invite any questions or feedback from the board.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? No questions, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Graywood.
We move next to B.com.
Okay. Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. We will now move to our next presentation of this evening, which will be our MAP Spring 2025 administration. As you know, that we are implementing the third iteration of MAP testing as we rolled out brand-new this year in Petersburg. And so we will have Dr. DeCarde Jackson, who is our Director of Research, Planning and Accountability, and Research Planning and Accountability. So we will have her bring our spring MAP data. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair Pritchett, vice chair peers, school board members, all the community members joined here today, and those who are joining us online. I am Dr. DeCarde Jackson again, as Superintendent Brown just shared. I'm here to share with you our update on our MAP Spring data, as well as to share with you our SOL plan for administration this spring. This presentation will cover four major topics. Of course, I briefly review what the MAP assessment stands for and how it works. We'll analyze the MAP growth data. We will talk about how we're integrating that MAP data into SOL preparation. And then we'll discuss our SOL plan for this year. As a reminder, MAP measures two things, not just achievement. It also measures growth, which also kind of holds in line with our actual SOL assessment for this year. Next slide. So as a reminder, MAP is an adaptive test and is given in multiple subjects. But in Petersburg City Public Schools, it's administered in both math and reading. So in math, there's students in grades one through eight. In reading, for students in grades two through eight. Again, the data helps inform a data-driven instruction. It tracks students' growth over time. And it also predicts potentially how students will perform on the state assessment, which is the standard of learning assessment. Next slide. So the first slide you see here is going to break down how students on each grade level perform as far as their growth, meaning our growth targets for math. Now, just want to make sure I do a disclaimer. It doesn't mean that each student didn't grow. Again, as I kind of remind you, how many actually met their growth targets. And ideally, we want at least 50% of the students to grow. So you can notice in grades two through six, we kind of got closer to the mark with 40%, whereas grade one, we did not quite meet that mark. And we recognize that there might be some instructional gaps, as well as learning as they transition to doing standardized testing for those younger grades. Also, grades seven and eight definitely needed a little more support. So we kind of made sure we support them with curriculum planning, student engagement, and instructional focus. Now we're going to look at the reading for grades two through eight. Where you notice in grade five, they definitely almost hit the mark with 50%. But we showed that some of the other grades figure between 33% to 49%, where sixth grade was a little low, as well as seventh grade. They highlight some potential concerns, as we know we need to support them in those transitional years. And also more targeted interventions for grade eight, as it kind of came up a little bit more with 45%. Again, I'm going to remind you, it doesn't mean they didn't grow. It means they did not necessarily meet their growth target. All right. Next slide. So this slide kind of goes more into detail. Remember, as Superintendent Brown just mentioned, we gave the MAP assessment in the fall, winter, and spring. The students do not take the exact same assessment. We expect students to grow. So therefore, the assessment bar moves higher each time. So just another reminder. So in the fall, this is how, is predicting how students will perform if the SOL was given at that time. Then we gave it in the winter, and it predicted how students would perform if the SOL test was given at that time. And then we gave it again recently in the spring to predict how students would figure if the SOL test was given at that time. The very first category that you see there, to show proficiency, we of course added the students who scored advanced, as well as proficient. So we combined the blue and the green. So that's what you notice that gold bar at the very top. So if the test was given at this time, it would show that 30% of our students, which is 555 students, would have showed either advanced or proficient between grades three through eight on the MAP, I mean, sorry, on the SOL. Again, it's a projected proficiency. And if you break that out a little further, 1.4% students would show advanced, 29.3% proficient, 38.4% would show basic, 30.9% of the students would show below basic. That gives us a total of 1,806 students. Next slide, please. We want to take a moment to really say, what does that mean? And actually compare that to what we know, our new accountability system, because I think that's very important. So as you know, with the new accountability system, we get a certain number of points for students who score advanced, which means we'll get 1.25. And remember from the previous slide, that was 26 students. Students who score proficient will receive one point. Students who score basic, .75, and below basic, .25. And all of that data is only accounted into the portion where you see mastery. So in elementary school, mastery counts for 65%. And in middle school, mastery counts for 60%. All right. Next slide, we're going to look at reading at this time. So now we're going to look at a little closer, similar slide, and show how students figure from the fall compared to winter and spring. Again, look at their top gold bar, which kind of combines, again, your green and your blue, which are our advanced students, as well as our students who score proficient. So it's projected at right now, the students in the area of reading in grades three through five, 27.5% of the students would have scored advanced or proficient. It was to break that up, 2% actually scoring advanced, where 25.5% of those students would have scored proficient. 56.4% of the students would be scoring basic, 16.2, below basic. In the spring for reading, 1,787 students completed the MAP assessment. All right. Again, similar slide. Again, if we was to kind of combine that, just so we can understand it, we want to kind of really make sure we understand the new accountability system. That whole portion would count towards mastery, 65% in elementary, as well as 60% for middle school. Next slide, please. So we want to take some key takeaways by looking at this data. It really does tell us where we can really form and target our instruction. We saw there was a significant drop from some students in math from below basic. Reading has also declined. But we also noticed that the advanced group also slightly increased from the winter to spring, which is very- Reading has also declined, but we also noticed that the advanced group also slightly increased from the winter to spring, which is very promising. We need must to continue to work for our parent engagement, continue to strengthen how to use this MAP data, share that with our students and families, support learning at home, especially with students as we about to approach the SOL assessment. So what are we doing about this? How are we taking this data? What are we doing at the central office level? Right now, the central office team has facilitated a fifteen-day support plan for each content area. We have also did an in-depth professional development, I believe it was on March, I mean, April, the, was it March seventeenth? March seventeenth. Provided onboarding for the tutors to make sure they're trained on our programs that we're using, Lexia and Zern. Support the implementation of curriculum framework, offering ongoing support for our coaches, as well as our consultants. Provided criterion guidance as you support the small group students. And we shared a wealth of resources for SOL support with parents through family engagement and university. At the school level, our school leaders implemented their action plan. They developed targeted small groups, implemented after-school tutoring programs, coordinating in-school program with tutors during instructional day, organized some Saturday school supports for additional staff members, provided ongoing support for teacher training. Also, more support on administering MAP and how to use that data, as well as parent information sessions. And they worked closely with our ELA, math, science consultants to build an understanding for best practices in curriculum. Our teachers have still been working tirelessly to make sure they understand the MAP data and how to use that to create their small groups, provide interventions based on those students' individual skill levels. They have held conferences with parents to discuss what that means and different strategies of support. Next slide. So has this, has this information shared with parents to support students' learning at home? And that's what I think is most important. Of course, we mentioned already that we've sent the MAP reports home during a parent-to-conference window. We've also held Parent Night, where we share the MAP reports, data, what does it mean? And also information that's shared at home through Parent Square. And currently, we're working closely with the public library to make sure that students also have access to these resources at home. So by Monday, all the students will have received what's called a clever badge. And that badge will give them access to these resources, not just at school, but also at home. These accesses, you can see the platform here, digital learning tools. And that MAP data has been uploaded right into Excel, their individual score, to give them an individual plan, to hone in on wherever they kind of, whatever skills they may be struggling in, to give them additional practice problems at home. So as we prepare for the SOL test, it's very important that our students have access to materials that can help fill their learning gaps. And we know by partnering with our community, local library, they'll be able to support us and support students while they're away, while they're not at school, with these digital learning resources. Oh, absolutely, so go back. So not only at the library side, but they can also access it by phone, because we know all our students may not have a computer. So that's one advantage of having that digital QR code. They hold it up if they have a camera access, they can get right on those same learning platforms from their iPad or from their other tablet or from a parent's phone. If they do have a computer without a camera, we also send instructions home that can also show you how to just use the login, use your student ID to be able to access these resources. So we want to make sure all students still have access to this, whether they have a computer or not. And again, those instructions are being sent home if they have not been sent home already. Want to take a moment to look at our SOL schedule, just to show you. We're starting testing on May first, which is not far. So that's why we really, really just support students now, just only while they're in school, but also at home. So for grades three through five, the Petersburg City Public School testing dates are May first through May fourteenth. For our middle school students, it's also May first through fourteenth. For our term grads, it's April fifteenth through May thirtieth. And for our high school students, they're going to test the first week of May first through May seventh. Of course, this does not include any retakes or expedited, um, retakes or makeup testing. This is our basic testing window. Would you like to add anything, Mr. Brown or Ms. Brown? Any questions? Board members?
So thank you, Dr. Jackson. And so again, I just want to, you know, remind the board, this is our first year of rolling out MAP for reading and math. And it was, the primary purpose was to start putting data in front of teachers, data in front of principals, that they can see at different times throughout the years. Of course, fall, winter, spring. And as we know, as Dr. Jackson said, the test is adaptive, so it gets more and more difficult. The more you answer questions correctly, the more difficult the assessment gets. And of course, the cutoff score for fall changes to winter to spring. And so they want kids to be able to master more difficult content that is in alignment with the SOLs. And so you see some fluctuations, but our whole purpose this year was to put data in front of and put it at the fingertips of principals and teachers, so that they know where every child is performing in those windows, and then put practices in place to begin to address them. So I just want to just highlight that work and to say that we still have lots of work to do, but we are starting. And now we are using the language of data to drive the instructional decisions that we're making. And I think Dr. Jackson put in the slide, what is happening at the district level, division? What are we doing to support kids? And that was outlined. Then we wanted to talk about what principals and school-level leaders are doing, because ultimately, this work sits in the lap of principals in the schools to help teachers be able to do this work. And then what are teachers doing? Because the question is, what are we doing about it? The data is the data at this moment, but the question is, what are we doing differently with the data that we have? And this is our first year of rolling it out, these three different times. And next year, we'll get better and better with people understanding it and making sure that parents understand. This is the first time they've seen reports, and so we're going to have to go deeper. But this year, we were going to throw it out there, start talking about data, and putting numbers where kids are performing in front of teachers to help support where kids are. So just want to add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from board members?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I'll move to my map first. Mr. Lindy?
Thank you very much. I really want to get into classrooms, so I can enjoy seeing how the students participate with it and how their strengths come out, and they manage that pretty well.
Let me just answer. I'll let you come and answer. But yes, I'll let you answer.
So our question is, how are our students engaging with MAP? How, what is it doing for them as we try to, next year again, begin setting goals? I know we started this year with kids understanding, here's where I was in the fall, here's where I'm supposed to be. I might be behind, I might be advanced, but here's where I'm supposed to be from August to January. And if I'm not there, then what are the goals that we're setting in front of you? So that Yolanda or Bernard or Takari can know what they're trying to reach, because they're competing with themselves. And so I'll let Mr. Brown take it from there.
Ms. Brown, thank you for answering this, but I will, I will add that one of the things that we're doing this year is trying to empower our students and make them owners of their learning. And so teachers have really been sharing the data with students. They've been having data talks with students. Students have been setting goals. We are, as Ms., in the presentation, you saw a couple of the platforms that we're using with students. Excel, Lexia, Learn, Zern, Zern. All of those platforms are in line with MAP. So a kid knows that when they take their MAP score, their MAP assessment, that MAP assessment is in line with Zern. So when they go on Zern, Zern is working on those skills that they may have been missing to build them up. And so this has been a year of really getting our kids to own their data at different levels. It's happening very well in some schools. I'm going to be quite honest, in some schools, we still have some work, but that happens in the classroom. And our teachers are doing an outstanding job with it. They have been, our teachers have been juggling a couple of things this year. One, the new instructional framework, and so learning how instruction looks in our classroom. And I've been in the classes, and they are doing an excellent job of doing it. Where we are, I will have to say, I have to give my hats off to our teachers. They're really trying. The use of, the use of data has been a focus. I've seen, and I, at our last parent engagement meeting, I think one of the teachers in here stopped me in the parking lot to tell me how they were using data based off their kids' MAP data. And this was a middle school teacher in the science classroom. And so this, this is exciting for us in Petersburg, because what I've learned is that where in the beginning, people were kind of nervous about what the data is saying, now people are saying, you know what? Here's where we are. What can I do differently to support children? That's what I would say. Does that answer your question, sir? I'm sorry.
It does.
Okay.
And I was thinking about the fact that how do our kids, how do they feel about the mastery of what they're trying to do? Are they excited? Or are they conscious of it, of what they're actually doing?
I think that's one of the questions that we still face, because it depends on the grade level. It depends on the child. There are some kids that are very excited, and they already have plans. I think the, the key is that we, as a community, have to wrap ourselves around our children and show them and talk to them about how important testing is, how important data is. And I always go back to when I was a principal. And I used to tell my kids, the data, the data, whatever data you give on an assessment, that's what people who don't know you think about you. And so if you don't give your very best, and you have, and you, and you give just, you just bubble in, then people see that data who don't even know you make assumptions about you. So for our kids, that's not a kid issue. That's an adult issue. That is a community issue. That is a school board issue. That is any adult that has contact with our children, building our children up about the importance of doing well on assessments. And so I would say that's where we are. We need the adults in our community. We need the adults in our schools to talk about how great our kids are and how we have high expectations for them, because our kids only give us what we expect of them. And so when we look at our data, that data is not what our kids put in. It's what we as adults did with our kids. And so that is not just a teacher issue. That is not a principal issue. That is not a school board issue. That is Petersburg issue, all of us together. And so as we prepare for SOL, I would encourage every adult listening to reach out to other adults. And if you interact with a child, talk about how great they are, and that we need for them to give their best. That's what I would say, that's, that's where we are in this age. And once we start doing that with kids consistently, our kids will start believing in themselves. If a kid don't care, it's because we have not taught them to care about it. And so that's our responsibility. I hope that helps.
Pre-Jones. Pre-Jones.
That was so good. That was so good. Do you have a question? I do know that our students recently took the mock SOE. Do we have data from that to compare it to the MAP? Or is that something that can be compared to MAP? And I will say this, to answer your question, because I say it often, I have a sixth grader at Stanford. And my kid was excited about these tests, and it's because his teachers prepared them for him. So I would say that if you keep it, if we keep it in front of the kids, they will have something to be excited about. That, that's something that I did want to point out. So I do know it's working, because our kids are excited. My kid was excited, and my kid is not excited about any test. I mean, literally, any test. So I do want to share that. I did want to share that. But can the mock SOL data be compared to the MAP data?
So the mock SOL is a different assessment. We can compare it, but it's really comparing sort of apples to oranges, because the MAP assessment projects proficiency. And the mock SOL is just on that content alone on strands. But we can put it up there, but it might not portray the true story of the data.
So can I, can I add to that, Dr. Jackson? So I think that is a great question. There are two different types of data, and we're measuring different things. And as she talked about, the specific standards that Virginia has laid out, that's what the benchmarks are. And they're what given time, what has been taught for that given time period. Versus MAP is assessing what a, an eighth grader in Virginia should know and understand and be able to demonstrate across the content. But what you do is, there are two different types of tests, measuring different things. You can triangulate and create a profile of a student. They may be in conflict, but you have a student who has grades, they have a benchmark assessment, and they also have a MAP, they have MAP data. So that's three different types of data that you say that Takari has. And so let's look at where Takari's weaknesses are. Let's look at where her strengths are, because grades is a piece of data. And so is she making A's but not doing well on the assessments? Then there's a disconnect there. So what we do is, we take those pieces of data and we create a profile to say, here's how we got to support Takari, so that she moves with those goals.
So yes, as a reminder, we know MAP is a national-normed assessment, and they set the benchmarks nationally. And as Superintendent Brown just said, with the actual SOL, MAP, mock test is sort of Virginia standard. So we do use multiple data points to assess the students, but it won't be a true comparison. We will put them right next to each other.
But it's a part of the data that we know on the student. But we want our students, and that's what I like about MAP, and what we brought is that MAP compares an eighth grader who's taking it in California and understands that here's what an eighth grader should know, understand, and be able to do by the time they finish eighth grade. And where do they compare with their like peers across the country? Because that's what we're getting kids to compete across, not just Petersburg, not just Virginia, but across this country. And so that's why MAP is very difficult, because it changes. If you answer five questions correctly, guess how much more difficult your assessment is going to be? If I answer five incorrectly, they're going to drop the level of rigor, because I'm not ready for it. But it still tells us where they are in reading and MAP. And I'll stop.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, mine is not a question about math, but, but, a math, but an observation. As an after-school tutor, I've had the privilege of working in Ms. Cross. And I'm, sorry, I can't remember the name of the other gentleman who, are they co-teachers? Wilsons. And I'm just fascinated about what the kids in second grade are doing. I mean, just the math, the, you know, the better, bigger than or less than. It was, I, I know I wasn't doing that in second grade. I know I was. You know, and I was a top student in my South Carolina graduating class. So I'm just, I'm really, and that tells them how good they are. Now, there are kids there who are struggling. And fortunately, I get to have them, because I try to inspire them, to let, to try to get them to care about their learning. And I just, I feel so strongly about that, that if we can somehow, for those kids who do not have the advantage of parents who have high expectations of them academically, I think that it's a matter of building that caring about myself in order that I can learn. And I just, I want to do that every day there. But keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. This is Peter.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. This is great. This is, we knew it was going to be a lot, and we know it's a lot of work. Being a, you know, a product of Petersburg and being married to a former educator for almost forty years. One thing she, I'm particularly interested in slide, slide fourteen. And something that she taught me, being engaged and getting engaged with my two boys in school. She wouldn't come to the school, because the conflict of interest would be that she's teaching. So she wouldn't get involved in it. You're going to the school. And so it's like, what I got to offer? Not educated. So she mapped it for me. This is what I'm expecting you to do. This is what I'm expecting you to say. This is what I'm, you know, so she did a little role model at home, and I expect you to do this. And here's the ledger. You go and write all this stuff down, so. And here's the ledger. You go and write all this stuff down. So. I said all that to say this, but we were talking about parent communication too. Now, um, uh, what is going to come back after you send this stuff home to the parent? And how are they going to reengage? Because my reengagement was that after she gave all of this to me, I could take it to the school. My relationship, uh, with the teachers became, were great. My boys didn't like it, but our relationship got better because I knew what I was doing. I know parents taking this stuff home, this is going to be tough. So what else are we going to do to ensure that that engagement stays intact? The follow-up stays intact. The next steps, uh, when I say next step, that next step might be anything from another. I see you got parent data night, parent data nights. Is that going to be continuous? Is there going to be a time where they're going to, the parent can share some feedback? Because it needs to be some homework because they're not going to get this just like that. And, and they need, there needs to be something that goes along with it. So it'd be a lot of feedback, but parents bring it to you.
Absolutely. They really do. I received an email from my parent just recently and that kind of posed me to say, because she got the one sheet we gave them at the back to school night, this is great, but I need a little bit more. How can I truly support myself? I got the report. I see the numbers, but what do I do with this? So that's why we're like, okay, we have these numbers. We have these great programs. Let's marry the two. So we took all those scores from MAP, did a bulk upload into iXL and I called that parent back saying, you know what we have now? Now they can work on these. They have a special report just for that student. And there's a special profile. They can get more practice problems in the area your child is struggling in. She was floored. Now, she obviously, okay, now I can go back and share with the parents at my school. So I want to call her like a parent ambassador, but now she's going back to share with additional parents and we will have additional nights, um, individually at the school to support them. Our ITRTs are on board to support our teachers with this again, because this is new. It's not just new for parents. It's new for teachers. So I have to provide the teacher with the support on how to use this because they're not going to all call me. They're going to be calling on teachers to ask them, hey, you sent this ID, um, clever ID home. What do I do with it? And we have to be patient to walk parents through those steps. So you couldn't have a continuous conversation. So I know that our communications person is going to put on their website with detailed instructions. She's going to put on our social media platform to make sure that all parents receive the information. And it's going to go home and then it'll be a continuous relationship coming back to say, hey, I received the information, but I do need additional support or I have it, but I'm going to this meeting right here and I can explain to other parents too. So having parent ambassador support and then I, um, ITRT, school council to continue to support that feedback. But I do agree it needs to be ongoing. They won't get in just sending a paper home or just a parent night. I agree.
I appreciate that because the key is that the parent is able to start talking the same language.
Yes.
Now you really know that they're on board because the fall off is that you're not going to hear anything back. So, and the more we stay engaged with them, the better it's going to be on the long term because this is a lot of stuff.
It is.
Because it's, it's so much, you know, we want to make sure that the parent stays on board. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's exactly right, Vice Chair. Pierce, that's a great, um, commentary. I also want to just, I know Mr. Brown will probably double tap, but as we're building the calendars that we'll bring and we'll be bringing to you all soon for review and feedback, we're trying to build into the calendar specific parent conference, parent teacher conference days into our calendar. And into that agenda for those parent teacher conference days will be the ongoing piece so that we have something systematic that every time we meet with parents that's already planned and on the calendar, not just a phone call. Though we do that, it'll be a part of every parent teacher conference day that we've scheduled in our calendar. And MAP will be at the top of it to walk parents through individually throughout the year.
I think also right now, if you're a parent and you just wanted to support your child as we prepare for SOL, it's just, if you just say, please get on iXL on your cell phone. Spend 15 minutes on iXL on your cell phone. Kids already know how to get to iXL and iXL is linked to their MAP scores. So that will be one tool that whether you're coming to the school or not, iXL, Zern, kids can access that at home. And if parents just remember two words, iXL, Zern, every time a kid pop in the car, jump on iXL on your cell phone while I'm driving. Talk to me about, look at what they're doing on iXL. Look at what students are doing on Zern. That would be an easy way to help us build, um, our, our students up.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Davis.
Great presentation. Thanks for the, those words of direction. Now we know where we are and we know how we need, what we need to do to get there. Thank you.
Mr. Miles?
I didn't know what to expect from MAP, but I, I'm really excited about it now. Um, the, um, my, my thing is, is that, um, um, the kids know where they are. You know, and, and the thing is, is that a lot of times it's hard to do anything, especially get someone in direction if you don't know where they are. And, uh, that's very important. And being able to identify what skills that they, skill level they own. One thing I noticed in the school system that we start tutoring in the spring. Now that we know where they are, it seems like we can identify the ones that need help at the beginning of the year and, and start working with them, especially the weaker ones at the beginning of the year. One thing I can honestly say about Petersburg, because I was special year and they took me to another level by the time I was in sixth grade. I was reading on level by the time I got to the sixth grade, but when I finished the first grade, I wasn't even on the kindergarten level. And they put me in a program going to the library for a reading specialist every day for one hour. And I went Monday through Friday for one hour. Ms. Morgan, you know, she married Mr. Harrison, LT Harrison. And I was, I went to that lady every day for one hour. By the time I finished the sixth grade, she had me on level. We were doing the REA. I mean, what was it? REA reading by color? And she had me on level. And, but the, but what I'm trying to, um, say is, um, we have a lot of things, tools in place. What are we doing to raise the kids' academic esteem? We want to raise their self-esteem, but their educational esteem, knowing where they are and when they progress, to feel good about that. Because, um, we have kids come, come, come in front of the board for, um, student hearings. And it shouldn't be an eighth grader on up in Petersburg don't understand where they are when it comes to GPA and different things like that. I hear Mr. Pierce all the time, say, you know your GPA. When, the first thing the counselor went over with before I finished the eighth grade was where I was in my class with my GPA. When I went to the ninth grade, I knew exactly where I ranked in my class. I knew exactly where I was in each subject area. And we got kids coming in here in 11th grade, don't know their GPA. We just sent some kids off that had scholarships to visit colleges and, and, and some of them, um, the coaches call us back, the colleges want them. They said, no, they need to go to junior college. They only accepted two out of the four because they looked at academically that even though they're passing, they, they're not going to make it at this school, not at that level. So we need to make sure they know where they are academically and raise their academics, um, esteem to make it, you, you know, so their goals can be achievable because they, one thing about Petersburg kids, I know they can do. It's, it's, I, I know they can do. What you said, you just preached a sermon, buddy. Because, because it's going to take, it's going to take all of us. It's going to take all of us. But the earlier we identify and the earlier we address it and not just do it for the SOL, but do it for the child all year long, the ones that, that, that we can identify. One thing with this MAP, I don't, thank you, Dr. Jackson, because we need a tool to say, what skill level are our kids on individually? And see, that's what this does. And I'm excited, but I want you to explain something to me though. What's basic between proficient and basic? What's the difference? Because proficient means they doing it based on, um, it's good enough. So, but what, 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 what does basic mean?
So when we say proficient, so I can start with advanced first. I went down to advanced. So advanced, we're referring to SOL, comparing to the SOL score and how it's going to be on the SOLs. So advanced is 500, well, the SOL range is from zero to 600. 500 to 600 will be scored advanced. It's a cut score, right? So that's the range of the SOL, right? So anything that's above 500 is considered advanced. Anything 400 to, um, 499 is considered to be proficient. Anything from 400, I mean, 399 to 350 is basic. Anything below 350 is below basic.
Okay.
So those are the same terms they use for the Standards of Learning Assessment and that's, um, the same terminology they're using in MAP so that way we can correlate it.
Okay. Did that very good. Now I understand.
So yeah, they're just correlating, they're doing a great correlation for us.
I understand that SOL, so now it makes sense.
Yes. We want to use the same language. Yeah. So we use the same language you're using in MAP. It's the same language they use on the SOL. Yes, sir.
I got it.
And Mr. Miles, just to address a couple of things that you mentioned in your comment. One was around, um, starting tutoring early. The curriculum team, we have already been working and planning with having, having those tutors in the building early. The other thing is around you questioning about our kids not knowing where they are. We have just finished, we're in the process of redoing our master schedule because in our division, we had not used the power of Power School to support, um, instruction well. And so we had not updated Power School in five years. The team has the principals. Um, our IT team has been working on updating Power Schools. So now parents will have access to kids' graduation plans, which is a way of now I know where I am. I know what I need to do. And so the division, we are creating the opportunity to share that information with parents. Again, you know, you can offer, but people have to accept. But also the people who are working with students have to do their part. So we are building infrastructure in to support that because it is, our kids need to know where they are. They need to know what classes they need to take. They need to know their grade point average. They need to be a part of the process of selecting classes. They need to make sure that we are doing right by scheduling them correctly to address their needs. One of the things that MAP data does, and we've, I've used in a previous district, it also shares with you their reports that says, if you plan on going to this college, this is what you need to score in order to get into that college. And so we are, we're really, this was a start this year. One of the things we're trying to do next year also is build a profile of a student so that, 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 that we can have a profile of what our kids look like as far as grades, assessments and benchmarks. So parents will have a full picture of what our kids are. Our kids can do, can produce better. Again, we still have, we have to talk about how important education is and talk about how important our children are. And, and what I would encourage is that we still, and I, and this is who I am, this is my heart. We have to talk about how good our kids are and stop making excuses and talking about what we didn't get as adults. We have to put our kids first. And if we put our kids first, what we do in the classroom, how we interact with them, how we speak about Petersburg City Public Schools will be different.
Can I say one thing? I'm talking about the four kids that we took to college visits. The reason why academically they weren't there because, um, they have a thing called the NCAA clearinghouse. We're not putting our kids in there, in the clearinghouse early enough. I talked to people at the college and they said, those kids need to be registered in the clearinghouse by the time they finish the ninth grade. And then, and then those grades will be in each year and be kept up because those two might have qualified if, when the next grades come through. But the thing is that we're not doing that part. So the thing is that I talked to some people here. They said, well, the kid got to go ask the, you know, ask, get, you know, get, um, their counselor and everybody else and the parents to sign off and they'll do all the due diligence. But we should set it up where when a kid is, it, and, you know, academic, because you could go to school for a lot of different things. But the NCAA clearinghouse, if they don't clear that, they can't get a scholarship, not, 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 not in those areas.
Yes, sir.
You understand? So the thing is that we got to get ahead of the game and make, well, really we got to catch up with the game because the other schools already, you know, other schools are already doing it. And the thing is, is, and, um, so the thing is that we got to have those kids by the time they finish the ninth grade, registered in the NCAA clearinghouse and, and counselors just put their information in. As they, as they accumulate these records, they just put it in and then they clear. So we got to do, we, we, we got to get ahead of the game. Right now, we're not doing it.
Yes, sir.
That's right. That's right.
Well, Mr. Miles, we have, uh, my new assistant superintendent of operations is over athletics now. And of course he, um, you know, he, Mr. Martinez, yep. So he will be working with the AD and, and the staff to make sure that their part is done along with the, the counselors and the other team.
And we are bringing on a supervisor, counseling to support because I agree, there are some things that we can do with our kid as far as taking, um, the SAT prep class. We've been talking to the principal and the counselors, uh, the ACT. We're looking at some other ways to offer because again, our kids can do. We have to create the opportunity for them. And so we know that as a division and we are going to work hard to do that.
Okay. My question, my question would, my, my question is how? Because I, I heard from the teachers, how are we planning? And hopefully you all can work on it this summer when we start next school year. How are we planning to help teachers that have students that disrupt the learning environment and they're unable, unable to teach with those students in there because the disciplinary board see them all the time? And we see the comments on the report card from the teacher that says, not paying attention. Even in class, cursing, doing whatever. So can we work on a plan on what we need to do for kids that are disrupted?
Sure. I, I mean, I'm going to be real honest, Mr. Miles. That's, um, Mr. Pritchard. I'm sorry. Boy, Mr. Pritchard. You know, it's, I was a classroom teacher. I was also a principal and I was a principal of schools where it was the most challenging schools in Atlanta, in Fulton County, in, in Atlanta. And one of the things I've learned and I, I found kids are engaged when we plan well. And I know that people don't like to hear that. But I was over at Vernon Jones Middle School. I go into a seventh grade class. It was a seventh grade, um, LC. I went in that LC and those kids were very engaged, not one. The teacher had stepped out to support a, um, teacher that was a sub. I sat in that classroom and I just watched those kids for about 20 minutes. Not one kid got up and was misbehaved. Not one kid was disrespectful. Not one kid was out of compliance. And this was a new teacher classroom. But as I looked around in that classroom, what I saw was I saw student work on the board. I saw resources on the board. I saw expectations outlined. And I went over and I talked to a couple of the kids and they were like, oh, I said, where's your teacher? He stepped out. Talk to me about what you're doing. The kid could describe what they're doing. And I tell people all the time, if one group of kids can do it, they're not being shipped in from another community. They're right here from our community. If they're doing it, then what's the difference? It's adult expectation. So we will still have kids that will misbehave. I get that. There would be no, there would never be a perfect situation. But a lot of the things that happen in the classroom could be absorbed if we were creating more engaging environments for students. And that's something that a curriculum team that we're going to be working on as we plan for next year. Giving our teachers additional tools to help increase engagement in the classroom. But again, as a teacher, and I remember as a teacher, having a class in an area we call Little Vietnam, where I had to make sure at night, I had to write out a script as to how I wanted my kids to work in a group. Because one class could do it, one class needs some support. So I, as a teacher, had to stay and I had to do that burning midnight oil because if I'm putting children first, I'm going to have to do a little extra. And I had to write out a script and I would say, okay, if we in group work, you're student A, student A, pass the paper to student B. Student B say thank you. Because sometimes you have to teach what you want. You have to teach what you want kids to do. And so that comes from, that comes from, intrinsically from each individual. As a division, we can only do so much. At the end, the power is in the teacher. So we can provide professional development. We can encourage. But the power is in front of, is the adult in front of the classroom. And so we're going to work to equip the adults with strategies. My, my quest is, and I, and I know that's for some people, is not enough. But I, I would say this, I saw three classrooms over at Vernon Jones, seven grade class. The kids did not know how we were coming that day. And even the class where the sub was, the kids were not disrespectful. They were not. They were not cursing. The sub was working with them. And what I can say to you, if those groups of kids in that four part was doing the right work, and they're coming from our community, those are the same kids that represent our community. So therefore, the only thing different is the adult in front of them and their expectation. And that may not be the answer that you want to hear, but that is, but the adult in front of kids matters. And I always, and I told principals, we need to make sure that the adults in front of kids want to be here for our kids and believe that our kids deserve better. And when you believe something deserves better, you do more for them. That's my answer. It may not be the best answer, but that's my answer.
And to, yes. And to that, when you, when you all decide before school open to have the training or this in-service for teachers with Mr. Lundy. Can we be invited to some of that?
You sure can.
Great to know what kind of questions teachers are asking and what responses we're giving back.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Miles.
To piggyback off your question about behaviors. Well, we know 95% of the referrals come from the hallways, bathrooms, cafeterias, all the other place, bus stops and stuff like that. So, when they come in front of us, the ones that getting suspended, school buses, especially school buses. They are, but, but MAP, MAP does a great job identifying the skills with the students. Now, we got about 30% long-term subs and teachers that are not certified. And we got to support them because we gave them that job. And what we need to do, know where they are, the MAP not going to tell us where they are. They're going to tell us where the students is, right? So when we hire these people and we know that they're coming in to, 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 to help us with our kids. And we know that in their development, I'm not talking about just getting certified. I'm talking about helping them in the classroom to make sure that they have those skills. And, 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 and to make sure that those skills are being developed. We can't wait just for a staff development to do it because that's not going to be enough. If, if, if it takes someone from central office, being in there, working with them the first couple of weeks or the first month or so, or having somebody pick it back on it. We just can't throw the people to the wolves because some, some of our kids are eat them up. And so, you could say, and you're right about that though. Because people say, hey, I go in there, I can, I can go in there with, and, and do workshops and forums and stuff like that. And people say, Miles, you're handling those kids good. But that's me. That doesn't mean you're going to be able to go in there and do the same thing. They're going to say, why they listen to you? I said, but that's me. Now, the next person coming in there, we don't hire, we need to make sure that we support them in a way and back them in a way. Because we got a lot of people, a lot of people that could probably do a lot better if we support them and stand behind them and give them what they need. Because they still need some tools though. We got some tools that's not there, yeah. So, but the thing is that, I agree with everything you say, but some of them like MAP, shows where the kids are. We don't have a map that shows where the teachers are. So we need to know who we hired and what, and, and what they need help in. And the only way we're going to do that, we got to get in there and do a little mapping ourselves with who we have, the ones that are not certified.
Well, I, I just, yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Miles, you're absolutely correct. And I think, just to add to what Mr. Brown says, I think we also are working on our structures for how we're going to create a robust professional development and professional learning structure here in Petersburg. Because we don't have that. And so, part of that is the training that teachers and staff members can get throughout the year that focus on the needs of our students. So we know classroom management for a lot of teachers is a struggle. Because kids are not following the rules everywhere across the country. But what we have to have is a professional development structure in place where we can teach teachers, whether they're certified or uncertified, how you effectively manage student behavior, how you intervene, and how you move if you have to do something else, restraint or otherwise. But we've got to provide that structure throughout the year, which is what we're also working on, Mr. Brown. I know you were going to mention. But that is part of a structure that we don't currently have in place. That if you are teacher A at Cool Spring and teacher B at Pleasant's Lane, you know you need help with professional, with classroom management. We have the structure for you to get access to that training for that. So that is a part of the plan as well. And we're also working with our leaders because, and I'll just be very frank here and honest is that we're looking at all of our adults. Because if you're not here for the right reason to move this work forward, then we will have different conversations. Because time is now for us to get people in front of our students who believe in what we're trying to do with our kids. And that may mean that some people may or may not choose to work with our students. But the people that are here working every day, they're working extremely hard, as Mr. Brown says. But you always have in every organization, that there are people who may not be on board with helping and supporting, but we got to support the people that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
What I had, what I was going to say on the, I wrote down, I just wanted to say this because I cannot say it. I do know how important it is, how the adults in front of the kids, how important it is. But we also have to be mindful about the adults that are in front of the adults. So if we are going to hold our teachers to expectation, we got to hold building leadership to expectation as well. If something is accepted and then when leadership or the executive team comes along, you know, and they're held to a different standard. So I just want to put that out because I would have been remiss if I didn't say it. I just think, except, I wrote down expectations and accountability across the board. As Ms. Brown said, if we're going to hold the teachers' feet to the fire, we got to hold leadership's feet to the fire as well. So I mean, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Okay, we're moving on to 4C. Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board Members. Our next presentation of the evening is our PCPS update on our summer programming that we will offer to our students for summer 2025. And so, we'll bring Ms. Ebony Massey, our Director of Elementary Education, and Ms. Joy Lowry, our Director of Secondary Education, to give us a summer programming update.
Well, good evening, Chairman Pritchett, Vice Chair, who slept, oh, hello. Superintendent Brown, board members, colleagues, and guests and viewers online. We would like to present the Summer 2025 Program for you this evening. Again, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Massey, who will start off our presentation this evening.
Good evening, everyone. We'll begin with the agenda. Okay, I'm Ebony Massey, I'm the Director of Elementary Education.
Joy Lowry, Director of Secondary Education.
All right, and tonight, we're going to talk about the Summer Academy. We're going to talk about our schedule and the timeline, dates and locations. We're going to talk a little bit about the academic and enrichment opportunities that we are providing for students, as well as our SEL Summer Academies and our additional summer learning opportunities. We have taken the liberty this year to start to refine how our Summer Academies look, sound, and feel, so that we can truly target support for certain groups of students.
Next slide, please. So we'll start off and talk about, just briefly, our Summer Academy schedule and timeline. As you can see here on our timeline, the staff applications were posted back in March. And we have received several applications. Those are required for student, excuse me, of teachers who are fully licensed or provisionally licensed for Summer Academy. Our Summer Academy website also went live last month. And then, student registration actually begins this week. You'll also notice there that we are, we have been interviewing our teachers and for different positions for Summer Academy. So those offers are getting loaded up and ready for review for Human Resources Department, so that those offers can be extended and approved. The student invitations, our registration, as Ms. Massey said, it will look a little bit different this year than it has in previous years for elementary school. Because we have different buckets of students who have different needs. Not only would it be academic, but also enrichment. And then, this year, we will be adding SEL, Social Emotional Learning Focus for students as well. So, elementary will, will be registration by invitation. And those will be extended in collaboration with the students, with leadership at the school. And then, for secondary, theirs will follow a traditional model to be able to register for either full or a credit recovery courses. But we'll talk about that a little bit more. As you can see from the timeline, I won't read it all out to you. But we are, of course, collaborating with transportation to look at the enrollment, when registration begins, to confirm bus ramps, bus routes, excuse me, and share those with families. When you look at the schedule, you'll notice that Summer Academy will be running from June 9th through July 17th this year. And there are three teacher workdays built in for Summer Academy for elementary, two for secondary. We will also have as part of that is a Summer Bridge Up Math Program for our sixth grade students, our rising sixth grade students who are accelerated in mathematics. And then, of course, July 17th, as I've stated, Summer Academy ends along with a summer commencement ceremony at PHS. And then, the following week, we will hold a sixth and ninth grade transition camp for our rising sixth graders and rising freshman students at the high school. But we will go a little bit more in-depth for some of those programs as we move through the presentation.
Okay, now, to talk a little bit about the dates and the locations and times for our academies. For the kindergarten through 12th grade academy, which are really focused much more on the academics. For K5, we will have it at Pleasant's Lane. 612 will occur at Vernon Johns Middle School. Those hours will be from 8:30 to, between 8:30 and 2:40. We also have the Full Steam Ahead Summer Camp. And that camp is specifically targeting our students that are chronically absent to try to get them re-engaged back in school. And those dates are June 9th, and there is a little bit of a typo there. It will be July 8th. And that will be for fourth and fifth grade students at Pleasant's Lane. Then we also have, as Joy talked about, or Ms. Lowry talked about, the Summer Bridge Up Program. Those are for rising sixth graders based on their SOL scores. And those students have demonstrated, they have scored advanced on their SOLs and they have demonstrated a need to be able to participate in those advanced courses for middle school. And then, we have sixth and ninth grade transition. And again, anything occurring for sixth through 12th grade will occur at Vernon Johns and all K5 programs will occur at Pleasant's Lane.
All right, so as we take a look here at our academics and enrichment opportunities, again, I'm not going to go into depth on this slide because we will go a little bit deeper as we move forward. But in grades K through 5, you can, you'll notice here some of the highlights of what will be offered. And we'll talk about those individually in just a moment. But in grades 6 through 8th grade, we will also be offering recovery and remediation for our English Language Arts, History, Mathematics, and Science. There is also a cadre of enrichment activities that we will be offering for our middle school students. The STEAM Summer Extended Learning Camps, there's opportunities for that. And then, we've, we've, we've coined our SEL focus for our students as Camp Compass for students from K through 8th grade. In grades 9 through 12, this year, we will be offering full credit courses. As you recall, we did not offer any full course, courses last year due to the short summer and the change in the academic calendar. However, this year, I'm happy to report that we will be offering initial credit courses again this year. And you can see there, there'll be an English 9, English 12, US and Virginia Government. There will be electives as well, economics, personal finance, health and PE. 9 and 10 with driver's ed in 10th grade. And then, again, you'll see some of those enrichment activities, the STEM Summer, excuse me, Summer Extended Learning Camps. And then, of course, we'll have all your traditional courses to be offered in credit recovery in, for students in grades 9 through 12 as well.
As we were talking about, there's going to be a little bit of a shift with our K5 programs. Traditionally, anything that our K5 students participate in during the summer is enrichment and it is not required. But what we did want to do is make sure that we were targeting specific needs of students. So we'll have essentially three different types of camps running during the summer. We will have one called Power Scholars, and that will be an academically focused camp where students will participate in academic support in the morning and then enrichment activities with the YMCA in the afternoon. That is traditional. I think we've been doing something like that in Petersburg for a number of years. We also know that we have a chronic absenteeism issue in our district. And so, we want to make sure that we are trying to re-engage students back into school. So this year, we are going to enact Full Steam Ahead Academy. And this academy will be targeting those students to try to get them re-engaged in school by participating in hands-on, real-world experiences, targeting STEM activities. So we will have an academic lens. However, it will be to re-engage and rebuild relationships. We just talked about how important that was for our students. And then, the third one, and we'll talk about that one in a little bit, but that is Camp Compass, the SEL component. So, you're okay, Ms. Yates? Do you want to go? Oh, that is the slide, okay. So for Power Scholars Academy, I'm thinking about who is eligible. All students who are, actually, we just talked about the MAP data, so we're going to be focusing in on MAP data. Whereas in the past, anyone could come and we weren't able to necessarily target specific support. So now, those students that were in the red level, we want to make sure that we are inviting those students first to be able to have that academic remedial support during the summer. For our Full Steam Ahead Summer Academy, again, I spoke about those students that are chronically absent. Their day is going to look a lot different. They're going to have about a half day, they're going to come for 16 days, and they will have hands-on enrichment and field trips. That, and we also are going to target our rising fourth and fifth grade students. We wanted to make sure that we started small so that we could get this right and we could duplicate this over the years. And also, knowing that those students will soon be in middle school. And we want to make sure that they have really good habits and understand the importance of going to school.
And for our secondary students, grades 6 through 12, our Extended Learning STEAM Opportunities are as follows. We collaborate with Virginia State University, Virginia Tech University, Richard Bland College, just to name a few. And of course, again, this year, we will be partnering with them to send some of our middle school and our high school students to STEM Summer Camps. There is even STEM Summer Camps that are STEM but athletic related. So our students will have a myriad of opportunities to participate in enrichment, not just the credit recovery, but also to go and have experiences where they can go to Richard Bland or Virginia Tech and stay for the week and really get an opportunity to experience what college is like. So, we do have those. And then, in addition to that, you, there are field trips that are, will be scheduled for our secondary students as well. On deck right now, we have the Science Museum. We have them going to Virginia Beach to the aquarium. So there's a lot of different things lined up and opportunities for those students that participate in our Summer Learning STEM for Petersburg City Public Schools. Now, I will tell you, just to note, throughout our presentation, there were certain links that you could click on. There is an active Summer Academy website that talks about and takes you to these opportunities where you can see more about them, and that's for our families. But also, that's where, same as last year, where our families will be able to also go to register for the different camps. So, I am excited as we get ready to talk about our newest addition camp for this year. Next slide, please. And here it is. So, I'm glad, Mr. Miles, you spoke about the students that come before disciplinary hearings. And what we have found, when we think about students who may have experienced ups and downs and then they might find themselves, you know, in a predicament where they have to look at their choices or find their way, hence Compass. We've created Camp Compass for our K through 8 students. And so, who's eligible for that would actually be our students who are in grades K through 8, who meet the following criteria. Those would be, as we've stated, your students that have been referred by the School Board Discipline Committee or perhaps even a school principal. And they've experienced out-of-school suspension time, expulsion. suspension time, expulsion, or even an alternative placement. And so again, I am so happy to share that this is the first year that we will truly have a camp that was set up and created that was dedicated just for those students, that they'll go for a half-day. While they won't necessarily focus on credit recovery, they'll be focusing on social, emotional learning, and then having that opportunity to find their way, so that we're really excited about that. And then for our ninth through 12th grade students, it does look a little bit different because we do know that our high school students do have verified credits and things that they must have, so theirs is slightly different. There is, theirs is a focus on transitioning back to the comprehensive setting as it's required, and they'll be able to recover courses and won't have as much SEL, but they will have a component where they do it for a specific amount of time. So again, we really are trying to make sure that we provide expectations for students, which you will also find on our Summer Academy website, and you will also find what those expectations are on the registration application as students register. Parents do have to agree at the end when they submit that I have read and I agree to support these expectations, which we, again, we've talked about is super important to engage our, our families, our caretakers, their families, caretakers, et cetera, will attend a parent orientation before the first day. So this is all about having a high engagement with our families, and then maintaining open communication with them as well as they work through the program. They will ultimately, once they complete that, they will participate in a re-entry conference with their home school, or the comprehensive school they're returning to prior to school starting. And then ultimately, that will help support with, because they would have a plan in place, would help them to reinforce what their expectations are, help set goals, you know, you have former credits, so we're really going to focus on that and look at how we're going to set you up for success. All right.
All right, and just to reiterate, we are, you know, to use Ms. Brown's phrase, a new day, a new way, together, we are definitely looking at trying to reimagine academic programs. So we are starting smaller and really wanting to do that well versus opening it up to the, to the, whoever we open it, you know, big, the big waves, and, and really trying to make sure we narrow the focus. Also though, for those students, because we are trying to be really intensive and provide that support, we wanted the community to also be aware of other additional summer opportunities that they can participate in. So looking at, we have the Summer Reading Program and Stream Academy going on with the Petersburg Public Library. We also have opportunities for camp engagement with lots of other opportunities, but also our Boys and Girls Club, as well as our Parks and Rec will be providing camps as well. So there are multiple opportunities for our students to engage in meaningful summer experiences that can help take them to the next level. Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah. Can you tell us about the field trips that'll be taken, because I know you have three Fridays in there, so they say they're going on a field trip be Friday. What, what, can you tell us about the three field trips that'll be going on?
So, actually, yes, and then I am going to turn it back over to Ms. Massey also, but for our secondary STEM opportunities, I've been working in collaboration with our STEM Coordinator for the Division, Ms. Coleman, and also our science specialist, our K-12 science specialist, who was working to identify field trips that are aligned with our curriculum standards, to help expose students and then reinforce science, because we do know even with the new accountability system, science still matters, and it still will be a factor, so it'll help to reinforce. So there are, and they're actually not necessarily on Fridays for the secondary, they actually will go, it could be for a week. Like, for example, one of the particular camps that they're going to is at Virginia Tech, and so they would actually stay there for a week. There was another one where they would go to Richard Bland, and they also stayed at Richard Bland for a week as well. So there's different, there is a myriad of different ones where they can go to with their partners. Absolutely, absolutely. Now, with that said, Mr. Miles, the elementary is, they do field trips on Friday as part of the Power Scholars, which is in collaboration with the YMCA, and they do take their field trips on the elementary side on those Fridays.
But they don't have a list of where they're going to go?
I'll let Ms. Massey speak to that.
Yeah, I was, I was just curious because I have some little ones that I'm associated with that I was just wondering what they had planned for them, that's all.
Okay, we are still working with the YMCA to finalize the Friday field trips. And then also for the STEAM, Full Steam Ahead, those trips will occur on Thursdays, and so we're really looking at creating a thematic approach, and so those students will be participating in something we're calling Eco Rescue, and looking at the human impact on the environment. And so they'll have an opportunity to create a docu-series, working with some of our technology-enhanced folks to create a media presentation, and through that, they'll become scientists that are looking at how to support and how to look at the environment. So during that time, they will be taking a trip to the, and please forgive me if I say it wrong, but the Appomattox?
Appomattox.
Appomattox River?
Yes.
No, I don't, this is one in Colonial Heights, so they'll be going to that river, collecting water. But they'll do that, and they'll test the water and look at the environment, but then they will also have an opportunity, so forgive me, I'm getting it together. But also, they will have an opportunity to go over to, go enrichment and take a look at Maymouth, and have an opportunity to look at the Nature Center. They'll also have an opportunity to go to the Virginia Zoo, and have an opportunity to look at things from that perspective. So we're, we're in process of finalizing all of these things. Mm-hmm. Look, no, the one, um, hold on, let me see, it's the one that is going out towards the Virginia Zoo, yeah, the one near Chesterfield.
I'm going to give you one more.
But we're still in process.
The 4H, the 4H farm they have out there. Get in contact with them because it might be a little bit safer than the Appomattox River. And, and it's, and it's open to you.
Okay.
All you got to do is contact, and then plus, they got a, a big community center out there that seats like 500. So if you take a, you know, that can serve lunch and everything else, so include them.
4H.
In Wakefield.
In Wakefield.
In Wakefield, don't go to the one and the other one, go to the one and, because that's the way we do community service out there. We just did a big community service this fall.
Okay.
We, we did a lot of work, rebuilt fences, replaced a pigpen, did a whole lot of stuff out there.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, definitely used them.
We're meeting tomorrow, so I'll make sure to bring that up.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So as we prepare for today, we have seen the PowerPoint. This was one of my favorite PowerPoints. I am so excited about these summer camps, I just don't know what I do. Um, I do want to highlight Full Steam Ahead, that was an amazing idea to target our chronic absentee kids and our families. Um, I think it'll be super beneficial with establishing relationships, and it goes right back to teaching the language, and I think, you know, it gives some consistency with what we're doing across the division when it comes to chronic absenteeism. So I think that's great, and I love the Camp Compass. And I think to go piggyback off of what we were talking about with some of our distractions and classes, I think that'll be great because it keeps the students, it reinforces the strategies, because I wrote down, reinforces the strategy, but also it keeps their routine. And I, I love that, and hopefully with Camp Comfort, it'll accomplish, it'll help with the new school year. So I just want to say, like, those were so well thought out, and I'm so excited to visit, so please keep us informed, because I definitely want to visit, even if I just come to pass out much.
Always good.
I definitely want to come and visit.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
I was looking at your, at the website, and on there somewhere it says 2024 PS, PCPS Summer Academy, but when I clicked it, the 25 information is in there.
Got you, so we'll fix that.
Make sure that's fixed.
Okay.
Also, just have a question, how will Community Builders play a role? Are they going to be connected to you all, or they're going to separate for their summer program with Dr. Lee? You remember she has, we have the money for the Community Builders Program, so do we know how that's going to run?
We'll continue to work with the family.
Yes, well, absolutely, Dr. Gay, you have that down for family engagement, for Community Builders, how will we be integrating that, and will be doing anything specific since we do have that funding and support?
And I have one more question. I also went through and I saw where you had applications on here for staff. How are staff selected for summer school? And how are, how are administrators selected?
Well, great question. So our administrators, we work with our assistant principals because they are 12-month employees, so we go ahead and assign them, and each year, the schools rotate. So this year, for elementary, Jessica Sturtevant will be our administrator, and then the other elementary principals help to support, I'm sorry, assistant principals help to support during that time. Then as we look at hiring our teachers, they apply, and then they go through an interview process, and we, based on their interview, and based on our needs, we match our teachers with the programs.
So there comes another question. Every teacher that applies, do we get an interview?
Yes, for elementary, we have made sure that we have an equitable opportunity, and if you are certified and are returning next year, then we are, we will afford an opportunity for you to interview.
Yes, so for secondary, it is, again, our 12-month associate principals and assistant principals, and so for this year, for the Summer Academy Coordinator, so that individual that is going to be responsible for ensuring that all three schools or all three programs run effectively, that will be one of our associate principals, Ms. Reddick at the high school. And then for our middle school, that Summer Site Coordinator would be Dr. Trina Mitchner in collaboration with Mr. Harris as well, he ran it last year. And then for the high school, it would be Assistant Principal Glenn. So those would be your administrators, since, again, since they're all 12 months. And then to answer your second question, those site coordinators for each level, they go through the applications to find, because again, secondary is a little bit different, so you have to have, if it's an English position, you have to have an English teacher, so that they're looking at them being either fully or provisionally licensed, and then they will go through an interview process with a panel. Once they go through and select the best candidate based on the rubric and the candidate scoring sheet that was provided to us by Human Resources, then they'll make a recommendation for hire, and then it'll go through the process to go through HR and then sent to School Board for approval.
And so how are we looking out as far as hiring for summer school?
We're, we're ready, like, so we are, we, I can tell you that one of our schools sent over the, what we call the request for RPAs. They sent them over today because they had, they actually started interviewing last week, and so they spent last week up and through this week going through, doing interviews, making those recommendations, and then, you know, making the, completing those RPAs to be sent to HR to, for approval for the board. You're welcome. Absolutely. Any other questions?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, academics team, for sharing our summer programming, thank you so much, and we will get that answer for Community Builders related to that. Thank you again, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. We will now have our, our Special Education Annual Plan Presentation 2526, and so we're excited to have Mr. Danny Costolo, our Assistant Director of Special Education, to provide an update on our plan for special education in Petersburg City Public Schools. Mr. Costolo.
Good evening, Chairman Pritchett, Vice Chair Pierce, fellow Board members, Superintendent Brown, all in and attended here and virtually. I'm Danny Costolo, I'm the Assistant Director of Special Education in this, and tonight I'll be presenting the 2526 Annual Plan. Next slide, please. So tonight, we'll cover, kind of cover, there are a few points in the annual plan that we'll discuss today, and we'll start with the purpose of the grant, as well as the application project, process, the allowable funds, the allocation of funds, as well as the grant-supported programs. And when you look at each one of these throughout the overview, this is basically the key elements in the grant, the grant, the federal grant process for the annual plan. Next slide, please. So when we look at the purpose of the grant, this, this federal grant supports compliance in special edu, special education laws and regulations, as well as it ensures that our school divisions, or our school division and SOPs maintain current policies, procedures, and documentation, as well as, the goal is to make sure that we are in alignment with federal and state regulations under the IDA. Also, the completion of certification insurance confirms that the school division adheres to those special education regulations. And then lastly, this process is a part, is a part of the annual plan, Part B flow-through application. Next slide, please. So when you look at the grant application process here, it starts with our December 1 count, and this is our final number of kids that we count after November 30th, so December 1, the total number of students with disabilities in Petersburg, and then through the next step in this process is done through the Finance Department of the MOE process, which was submitted and approved by VDOE on March 20th, and then the annual plan itself was presented to our local CAC committee on the 24th, and then today, we're presenting this plan to the School Board this afternoon. So, next slide, please. So when we look at the allowable use of funds, this is, these are areas or funds where we can support our students with disabilities. And so when we look at those funds there, these are, these are key supports and areas that directly impact special education services. So we'll look at employee benefits and personnel services, as well as purchase services, materials and internal services, and capital outlay is there, however, we, we don't do anything with capital outlay with this grant per se, however, that is an option that we could look at, but tonight, I'll kind of go into it a little bit more in the next two slides. So our to, our total for this award year is a little bit over $1.2 million for the year, and when you break those to, to, two parts, we look at Grants 611 and 619, so six, our 611 flow-through there is at $1.2 million, as well as then the preschool allocated funds, it's a $32,000 there. So that kind of gives you an idea of when we separate the 611 and 619, how that money's being spent. And so when we look at those major funding categories, we really concentrate on those areas of Personnel Services, Employee Benefits, Materials and Supplies, and the proportion is set aside, and I kind of go in, I'll go into that a little bit too during the next side, slide. Next slide, please. As far as the supported programs, going back to what we had the previous slide, when we, we allocate a percentage of the funds, such as $5,000 for this one specifically for child find activities during the summer months, and, and we do this in collaboration with the preschool intake team, this is when we go into our community, we go into different wards where we have, where we hold those child find events. That's where, that gives it as, an opportunity for the community to see the faces in the school division on how we can support, support their children, because oftentimes, if our parents don't have transportation or can't get to events, when we're there where they live and they, and they come out and they see us there, that's where it's really impactful, where we're able to reach those children and those families, and we really can utilize our supports and kind of provide them with the knowledge that we have to where we can kind of support their, their students. So the majority of this, this grant here really does go towards our salaries and benefits for our teachers. And so if you can see, there's a substantial amount that goes towards supporting our, our teachers and support staff in this grant. And then the proportionate set aside is that $26,000 that you see there, that's for students that are receiving services outside of the comprehensive setting. So we do have students that are in daycares, as well as private schools and home schools. Currently, we do have those two schools that are receiving services at, at the private school now here in the city of Petersburg. And when you look at that amount, that, that proportionate set aside amount comes from what's calculated from VDOE, so that's the money that's set aside, and that goes towards those services that we provide those students. After a period of time, if that money is not utilized, then we will just have to request it back, and we can utilize it in other ways. And so that number can fluctuate depending on the students that are enrolled in our school division that may not necessarily enroll in Petersburg City Public Schools, but are in, in the city that do require those special education and related services. And just to be clear, we do provide speech services, occupational therapy, and, and physical therapy service for those students, so we don't offer like a reading service and things of that nature. Next slide, please. Well, I guess that's it for me, but that was pretty quick. So, do any of you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Costolo. Any questions? Mrs. Tucker, sorry, would you please?
No.
No questions.
No questions.
Mr. Mall.
Um, the only thing you went over was the grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that's the only thing you wanted to present tonight?
Yeah, so our, yeah, 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 so this is, yeah, this is our, yeah, this is our.
Because I know what the special is, a lot of things that we could talk about.
This is our special annual plan, yeah, so it's, so it's, it is a federal grant, so we just kind of broke it up to kind of show you exactly what it is.
Okay.
Yes, this is what we do every year, yes.
All right, okay, leave it alone.
All right, no problem, thanks.
All right, last one.
Next, let's bring the number to board.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett. So we will pull up our policies for first read. And so again. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. So we have our policies for first read and as you can see that there were some February 2025 updates and so we moved our policies from our March meeting to this meeting. And so if you'll take a look at our PCPS policy number one, GBEA, the policy title is unlawful manufacture, distribution, dispensing possession or use of a controlled substance. That is in alignment with the VSBA policy, GBEA. And the purpose of this policy review, because this policy requires employees to notify the school board of any criminal drug conviction occurring on school property. That is in alignment with the VSBA, day of 225. Policy number two, GBLA, policy title is third-party complaints against employees. The VSBA policy alignment is GBLA and this policy language has been updated for clarity, legal references and cross-references updated. This revision includes language directing the superintendent to establish regulations for processing third-party complaints at the option of the school board. This is in alignment with VSBA 225. Our third policy of the evening is staff hiring procedures. This VSBA policy is GBN. This policy language has been updated because it includes omission, omission of pertinent information as a cause for dismissal or refusal to employ. This is in alignment with VSBA 225. Our fourth policy is voluntary retirement savings program. This is in alignment with VSBA policy, GBR, and this policy language has been updated for clarity. No substantive revisions have been made. Policy number five, GDQ, school bus drivers. This policy is in alignment with VSBA policy, GDQ. This policy language has been updated for clarity. Legal references and cross-references have been updated in alignment with VSBA 225. Our sixth policy of the evening is, is policy, PCPS policy, KA, and the policy title is goals for school community relations. This is in alignment with our VSBA policy, KA, and the purpose of this policy review was the policy language was being updated for cross-references throughout the policy in alignment with VSBA 225. Our next policy is policy number seven, LBD. The policy title is home instruction. The VSBA policy alignment is LBD and this policy language has been updated to include cross-references updated in alignment with our VSBA 225. So at this time, that completes our review of our policies for first read for the April 16, 2025 school board meeting. Thank you.
Any questions from board members? Please will come back to us on May 7th for action.
No, no questions, but one thing that we do need to do.
We haven't met on changes for our policy for the student handbook. Are we going to work on that? As a board? Because when we review that and approve it, we don't want to wait till the last minute to do it because we having a, a lot of challenges just with the student hearing where kids is, gets been suspended for 10 days, we don't see them for 15, 20 days. So we got to correct that.
So we have a lot to correct.
Yeah. How many, five, five, it's a student handbook. We need to take a look at that real good.
Absolutely. So what we'll do is I'll be working with Mr. Brown and the student support team because we will, I think Dr. Woods was here first and I think there was a, a school, a handbook that was presented early in, of last year in August, but we need to revamp that to put some new expectations in place in alignment with some of our school board policies like wearing hoods and wearing hats and things of that nature that align to school board expectations. So we will bring that forward for a work session. Is that how it goes? And so you all will get a chance to take a look at the revisions. But we're also going to be updating and creating a employee handbook that will outline expectations and, in alignment with our board policies so that we do employees and students, but we will be working on, Mr. Brown is not in here, but that team, the, the student support team will have to take a look at our current handbook, make revisions, and I'll be working with Mr. Pritchett around the date that we need to bring that for a work session so that we have enough time to, and I'll talk to communications about actually printing some copies for parents who need a hard copy because I think we did digital this past year, but we want to make sure that, I think sometimes when parents, if you ask parents when you have discipline issues, did you get a copy of the handbook and were you aware? Sometimes the answer is no. And so that is a part of our work, so I'll work with Mr. Pritchett on when the team can get that done so we can bring that for, for a read, for a work session.
Yeah. Mr. Pritchett?
Yes, sir.
Um, just to close that out, talk, you know, some of the things that we have in there, it's not a problem with the policy, it's enforcing it.
Yes.
And see, that's the, you know, so we want to make sure, just like when you brought up the hoodies and the hats and the, and the book bags, because I went up to the school and we know we got a clear book bag policy. And I watch them get off the bus and everybody don't have a clear book bag, I'm telling you right now. So when they walk through there, that's a part of security. They're not supposed to go no farther than that front door with those, with those ski masks and no book bags that you can't see through. So that's not on the teacher. Because when you get to the teacher, we'd already let them walk all the way down the hallway, all the way through the school. And then you want the teacher to enforce something that we should have stopped at the door. And, and, and that's, and, and so, so, so we're not going to put that on the teacher because we got the policy in place and we say we're not going live when they should not be able to walk through that door with that nonsense. So the, and so some things we have a policy for. How are we going to enforce it and make sure that we're consistent? Because we started out the school year real good because we had clear book bags. Now you go look at them book bags. It's, it's, they getting on the, they getting on the bus with them. We expect our bus drivers and teachers to enforce it when we should have did it right there at the front door. You know, and so we got to nip some stuff, but the, what I was concerned with is the kids that they're trying to miss out of school, the way we going to set that up. Because we definitely got to address that. You get suspended for three days, you shouldn't be out for 10. You could spend it for 10, you shouldn't be out for 15. So that's, that's, um, that's a really a problem because it's killing your own absenteeism. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Okay, next, we'll move to number five, public comment, public comment period. Oh, I'm sorry, I did receive a message. Someone with a white Kia, your lights are on in the parking lot if you drive a white Kia.
I'm speaking first, though, I'd rather speak.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, do your thing.
Miss, people on the issue for more than three minutes, please give your name, your address, your ward or your school. Ms. Lampley?
Ms. Brown, my key.
Lampley.
Let's take my key.
Good evening, school board chair, superintendent Brown, school board members, community members. My name is Bianca Lampley. I am a seventh grade history teacher at Vernon Johns Middle School and I am here to remind everyone that the teachers in PCPS are still fighting for collective bargaining. I heard a lot of discussion today about situations that collective bargaining could really help fix. We talked about discipline, we talked about PDs. We are your frontline. We are in the buildings. I am a veteran teacher that works with new teachers. I teach teachers, provisionally licensed teachers, and I do my best to try and help them out and give them tools and tips, but collective bargaining would allow the people that are there to come to the table and tell you, this is what we see these people need. This is how we can help make these people better teachers because we see it every day. As far as discipline, the biggest issue with discipline in the middle school has been those phones. There's not a consistent way of enforcing whether or not the kids keep the phone in the pouch on them every day. Do we collect the phones in the pouches and keep them locked up in the pouches so the kids don't break the pouches open? All of these are things that we who are on the frontline can tell you, this is what's going on, this is what we need to do. All we're asking for is a voice. That's all we want. Give us a chance to tell you as the people right there in it every day, how to improve our schools. Please, 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 support us in acquiring collective bargaining in PCPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lampley. Ms. Perry?
Protocol has already been established. I am Frida Curtis. I am retired PCPS employee, but I'm also working with PEA as a member organizer. I have been contemplating if I should speak tonight or not speak. That was my question. Thinking about for the last four years, how this board refused to act on collective bargaining. It is a disappointment and a letdown to me. The shameful way this board would stand behind a casino and not put in the energy behind the 692 employees speaks volumes to me. If this division likes to bleed employees each year, then you will continue to meet with the same results by not moving the resolution forward. However, if you want to maintain, grow and attract qualified personnel across this division, then you will consider passing the resolution. The trifecta is coming. Whether you choose to be out front of it or behind it, the vote is yours to make. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Good evening. As a resident of Petersburg, I'm here tonight, Madam, Mr. Chair, Madam Superintendent and school board members. Of course, you know, my name is Yvette Wilson, my role is a unit-served director. I'm here tonight once again with my boots on the ground. As a retired soldier, Army, I can remember that glorious day when I hung up those boots, knowing that there will be no more road marches. Can I get eight men?
Amen.
All right. Little did I know then, how they would prepare me for this journey, traveled here with PEA for the last four years. Our path, we thought would be smooth as we met each of you in sessions and you shared your experiences as union members and expressed your willingness to pass our resolution on collective bargaining. I remember that. However, what we thought were smooth beginnings became rocky paths. I won't spend time going over those rocky roads we traveled since then, but I will say we are battle-worn, but not discouraged. We have lost many soldiers in this battle. We left some of them on the field, but our struggle goes on in their memory. They have moved on to greener pastures in surrounding districts. Combat pay was not enough anymore. They left seeking better working conditions and respect. Let me just state, state, school board members, Madam Superintendent, our boots are shined up and ready to go the distance again as we embrace this new administration and a future board with our desire to achieve collective bargaining. As Ms. Mickin stated in a previous meeting, she shared with you that collective bargaining is coming. Frida referred to the trifecta. Do your homework and you will discover what she meant by that. Ms. Mickin shared with you collective bargaining is coming and it will happen with or without you. And we plan to make it happen. We stand with our boots on the ground, ten toes down, ready to continue the struggle. Collective bargaining now will be our battle cry. So we ask that you, this board, bring our resolution forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Wilson, she was our last person to sign out. Next we move on to our action item, Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and school board members. Our first action, action item is our capital improvement projects and so this is a continuation. And so it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the capital investment projects as provided. And so we'll take a look.
Mr. Chair, she did not know the protocol. May I ask that, is we allowed to speak?
Okay, come up, give your name and, are you the school or are you a teacher?
I'm a bus driver. And I, I would like to speak on behalf of the bus drivers.
Okay.
Like she.
I'm sorry, say your name.
I'm sorry, I'm Kildrick Moody. And I've been a bus driver going on three years with Petersburg Public Schools. Oh, I'm sorry. And I've been having a lot of, well, it's been a lot of concerns with all of us as amongst the bus drivers where we feel like we're at the bottom, but we're really at the top because they're, the children, they start with us. When they get on that bus, our job is every job in the school. We are the principals, we the nurses when they get sick, we, we got to be their counselors when they going through the bullying, we got to be their, we the custodian, we got to clean up behind them when they leave stuff on the bus. So it just seems though, we don't get the recognition, res, am I saying it right? The recog, recognition, recognition that we deserve as bus drivers. We're not supported where, when you try to deal with different situations, it says, we are the ones that get disciplined over the kids being disciplined. When we know we have to have the kids in school to keep the school system going and supporting the attendance that we need them to be there. So me personally, I try to take on the fact, that's why I said we do the role as principals. I don't just write my kids up because I understand, I don't know if that child ate the night before, if that child slept, being a, we don't know. They have feelings too, they're children. So what I do personally, I sit my kids down, I talk to them. Far as he was talking about the grades, I have kids come to me, I'm the first person, I see their pro cards before their parents see their report cards. They be like, Ms. Kay, look what I got, what I did, I had something that's failing. I encourage them, hey, go to tutoring, bring the grade up. And actually it has worked on several of my students where they brought their report cards back and their grades went up. So it's just that we don't have the support that we need and the people that we can go to that's going to have our back. We need them to have, we need somebody or somebody we can go to. Like I had a transportation, he not speaking on our behalf. I, we are, we come down after we didn't work, did all the, but it's just that we need somebody that we can, that's really hearing our voice. They, our, my coworkers been here to several meetings and then like at the end, we at the end, majority of the people gone, nobody hearing what we having to say. We want to be recognized just like everybody else because our job is more important because without us, they won't even be able to get to school. If we don't have enough drivers, we don't have enough drivers now when we need days off. We have personal problems, we go through stuff as well and then still have to keep a professional with the children. So we just ask that we, we be heard and we, we be recognized that we are a very important part of the school system. And it is a whole lot more, but I just thank y'all for just hearing that, that much. It's furthermore concerns from every angle, but like they said, we're going to keep fighting, we're going to keep coming back, we're going to keep letting, letting it be known. It's going to be in parts because we work hard, so we be tired, but we going to get here. because we work hard, so we be tired, but we gonna get here and we gonna let y'all know that we here, we here, and we important too. Thank y'all. It's Kildred with a K, K-I-L-D-R-E-D.
Well, I'm not gonna talk tonight, I know you're sick of me.
I thank y'all for listening to me. Y'all have a good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Yasek, you are refreshed, because I know that it's showing up in the, it's showing up in the, in the, on the online, so if we can maybe refresh, it's not showing up on the screen, and we can go through those action items. Capital improvements.
Are you looking for your...
The, the action items?
There are other action items such as, it's not showing up.
Yes, it's not showing up, but we have it here, so...
This is not...
Yeah, but we don't have, we don't have the attachment, it's not showing up, but it's here.
Yeah, the attachment is not showing up.
Since we do not have the attachments, since we have, we're having a little bit of a glitch, but we'll go ahead and read those, because they are part of the documents that are on the board, on the board agenda, on the website, in our board website. So our first, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the capital improvement projects as provided. As you know, this is a continuation of the items that we brought back in February that was approved by the board for us to do some capital improvements across our school division at schools and some at the central office. And so we will start with this one, sorry, with this one. So we are requesting board's approval to proceed with exhaust fan replacement at all nine of our schools, authorizing the expenditure not to exceed $260,000 to be paid to Warwick Mechanical Group under our current preventative maintenance contract that we already have here in Petersburg City Public Schools. Warwick Mechanical Group has been selected for this project due to their expertise in HVAC systems and their competitive pricing. By utilizing our existing preventive maintenance contract that we have with them, we can streamline this process and potentially realize some cost savings. We procured this, we procured Warwick Mechanical Group because we are already in a preventative contract with them, and so again, the contract spending authority is asking for authority not to exceed $260,000. The funding source will be our general funds, and again, the award will be, if approved, will be recommended to Warwick Mechanical Group. Our next... Okay, let's go. Take that one out, go backwards. Thank you. Thank you. So our second, it is the superintendent's recommendation, as PCPS is requesting the board's approval for a project to paint the interior environment of Cool Spring Elementary School for an amount not to exceed $265,000. This project aims to improve the physical learning environment for our students and staff at Cool Spring by refreshing the interior of the school with fresh paint throughout the building. The use of this cooperative agreement comes from Chesterfield County and allows us to efficiently procure these services while ensuring competitive pricing. We procured this again through a cooperative agreement that's currently in place with Chesterfield County, and the spending authority that we're requesting again is $265,000, and our funding source will be general funds. We're recommending that the award go to CPE Contracting LLC, who currently works in Enrico, Virginia. Okay. Oh, sorry, it's not a Mac. Thank you. So our third request this evening is, we are, PCPS is requesting the board's approval for a project to paint the interior of Lakemont Elementary School for an amount not to exceed $265,000. This project aims to improve the learning environment for our students and staff by refreshing the entire interior of the school. This use of a cooperative agreement from Chesterfield County allows PCPS to efficiently procure these services while ensuring competitive pricing. So once again, we are procuring this vendor with our, through our cooperative agreement from Chesterfield County. Again, our spending authority is $265,000, not to exceed that amount. We will be paying for it out of our general fund account, and we're recommending this award to CPE Contracting LLC in Enrico, Virginia. So at this time, again, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the capital improvement projects as provided.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions from board members? No questions, is there a motion to accept the recommendations?
So move.
Move by Mr. Miles, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six D. Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the disposal of three vans as provided. And so we have, we have several vans here. We have van number 268, that is year 2014, the mileage is 225,364, and the reason we're trying to dispose is because it's not running, it has full engine failure. The next van number is 925, its year is 2016, it has 141,158 miles on it, and it is, of course, not running, and there is a full transmission failure. We have van number 809, year 2017, and the mileage is 192,787, and of course, at this point, it's not running because there is a transmission fail. We have van number 269, 2014, mileage 191 miles, 825, and it is running but has a cylinder failure. Then we also have an additional, so we actually have five vans, it seems, for disposal and not three. And so here we have van number 511, year 2019, mileage is 87,216, and we are currently, it's currently being used, and we do not need to dispose of that one, so we only have four vans that are up for disposal. So at this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the disposal of vans 268, 925, 809, hold on a second, van 269 is running but has cylinder failure, are we recommending the disposal? So again, let's go back. It is the superintendent's recommendation that we dispose, that the School Board approve the disposal of van 268, year 2014, van 925, 2016, and van 809, 2017, as provided.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. You've heard the recommendations. Any questions?
Yeah, how do you plan on disposing them?
So how do we plan to dispose? Will we be, will we be selling these vans, Dr. Graywood? Will we be disposing of them, because they're not running? How do we plan to dispose of them?
You said Dr. Graywood, you're talking about Mr. Martina.
Okay.
Procurement, and...
If we need to bring these back?
We would have to go back and procure them and see what the law states.
What? Yeah, the reason why I ask, because we have, we teach mechanics up there at the high school, we'd be nice to use one or two of them up there at the high school, if it's feasible, I don't know.
So we can recommend, I can make the recommendation, we can bring it. So we will bring these vans, so we, because we don't know the clear procurement process and how we plan to dispose, we will have to bring these back until the next board meeting in May.
Ms. Chair, I guess, I guess the question is, I guess the question is, do we plan to sell them, or do we plan to junk them? Yeah, that, either or, yeah. Yeah.
Either way they go.
Yeah, right.
So typically, in our, so in our last disposal, we outlined the procurement process, because we were selling them on a, we were selling them to a vendor that you asked about, the last time, it was a vendor that we were selling them to that were gonna pick them up versus doing the auction, because we're not gonna get enough money and they were gonna charge us fees. So that's why we explained to the board, so we'll need to bring this back in March, and if it is on the table to donate them, then we will bring that recommendation so that the School Board can approve however we plan to dispose of the vans, we'll bring them back in March, I mean, in May, sorry.
And there is, in the chair, Ms. Brown, also there is a policy aligned to this, and it also has the code of Virginia that we need to follow.
Thank you. So I will request that we remove that.
Six D.
Okay. Thank you. So action item number 60, our personnel job descriptions. And so at this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the, excuse me, at this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve personnel job descriptions as provided, and I want to call your attention that we did make changes based on feedback to our parent liaison final job description to remove the information related to specific oversight of PTO and PTA. So we did make those changes, and so these are the finalized versions based on feedback. And so it is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve personnel job descriptions as provided.
Any questions on the job description? Is there a motion to accept the recommendations? Move by Ms. Proctor.
Second.
Second, Mr. Miles, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six D.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the overnight field trip for Petersburg High School students to attend the National Speech and Debate competition on, from June 15th to June 20th in Des Moines, Iowa. So we are excited about our students that will compete, they had to make it through the state, congratulations to them, and now they will be competing nationally in Des Moines, Iowa. So again, it is my recommendation that the School Board approve the overnight field trip requests for our PHS students to attend the National Speech and Debate Conference competition in Des Moines, Iowa.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Move by Mr. Miles, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Proctor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. We will now move to our next section, our proclamation for our Virginia School Board Association, or VSB, as they proclaim Workforce Readiness Month for elementary school, middle school, and high school. And so it is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the proclamation, which is up on the screen. And so for our Workforce Readiness Month, workforce readiness is essential to developing skill sets for students in Petersburg city's public schools. Thank you. To be successful beyond high school graduation. In recognition of the demand for highly skilled jobs over the next decade in Virginia, they increase collaboration with business and industry, thank you, with business and industry, the community college system, and the core school setting. The goal of the Petersburg City Public Schools Board is for the students to master core content, knowledge, and seize expanded opportunities for learning by supporting the successful development of workforce readiness and dual enrollment courses. Petersburg City Public Schools will continue to be intentional in its advocacy and awareness efforts to promote workforce development opportunities and create and implement a curriculum so that Petersburg City students are prepared to succeed globally. PCPS recognizes the Virginia School Board Association's designation for April 2025 as Workforce Readiness Month, and Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, is Workforce Readiness Day. We celebrate the CTE Department, its teachers and staff, and the Curriculum and Instruction Department for their dedication and hard work in ensuring the success of our students, adopted this 16th day of April 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation?
So move.
Move by Mr. Danz, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Proctor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F.
Autism, crush autism.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett. Sorry. Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the School Board approve the PCPS Recognition of National Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month as provided. And so our proclamation for National Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, whereas the Petersburg City Public School System is a center for diverse learning where all students are educated to their fullest potential, and as a center of our community around which we come together in support of the education of all students. And whereas autism spectrum disorder is a developmental disorder typically diagnosed during the first three years of life, impacting the ability of individuals to communicate and interact with others. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's National Health Statistics report, approximately 1% of the world's population is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas autism spectrum disorder is reported to occur in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, but is more than four times as common in boys as in girls. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention programs lead to significantly improved outcomes for individuals with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas Petersburg City Public Schools employs qualified and caring adults who educate and work daily to improve the lives of students with an autism spectrum disorder. And whereas April 2025 is designated as National Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month to increase public awareness of the need to support individuals with autism spectrum disorders and the family members, educators, and other professionals who teach and care for individuals with autism spectrum disorder. Therefore, be it resolved that the Petersburg City Public School Board of Education hereby celebrates National Autism Awareness Month from April 1st through April 30th, 2025, recognizes and commends the family members of children with autism spectrum disorder for their dedication in providing for the special needs of children with autism spectrum disorder, honors the teachers, parent professionals, and other educators who possess the desire, caring, and skills necessary to teach, assist, and respond to students with special needs, including those with autism spectrum disorder, and who work tirelessly to educate and provide high-quality services for all students with special needs enrolled in Petersburg City Public Schools, adopted by the Petersburg City Public School Board this 16th day of April 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Move by Ms. Proctor, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Tucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. Our PCPS Recognition of Administrative Professionals Day. At Petersburg City Public Schools acknowledges administrative professionals as administrative assistants, office assistants, receptionists, finance specialists, clerks, and other administrative support staff assigned within the various schools and departments within the division or district. Administrative professionals play an essential role in the functioning of the educational institution by coordinating the offices they support, tackling new challenges, and exhibiting grace under pressure, while assisting the employees, students, parents, and community in staying connected, engaged, and productive. PCPS recognizes the importance and contributions of our administrative professionals to the success of office operations. In unity with the nation, PCPS celebrates and recognizes the hard work and dedication of every administrative professional within Petersburg City Public Schools on this Administrative Professionals Day, Wednesday, April 16th, 2025. We take a moment to express our deepest gratitude to the invaluable members of our administrative professionals. We thank you for your commitment to the success of every student, employee, parent, community, and Petersburg City Public Schools mission, announced this day, Wednesday, April 16th, 2025.
Is there a motion to accept with the correction? Adopted is spelled incorrectly. Is there, wait, so we will correct the recommendation with the correction? Move by Ms. Proctor, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Danz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett. School Board members, we now have our proclamation for Assistant Principals Appreciation Week. Whereas the week of April 7th through the 11th, 2025, is designated National Assistant Principals Appreciation Week in recognition of their steadfast commitment to ensuring that every child receives a quality education. And whereas assistant principals are responsible for supporting the day-to-day operations of their schools, which includes leading instructional programming, managing educational initiatives, and building relationships with students, teachers, parents, and community partners to achieve excellence. And whereas assistant principals work diligently to establish a positive culture and climate in their schools, and provide a supportive and safe school environment where students learn, grow, and thrive. And whereas we are very proud of our assistant principals and sincerely appreciate their ongoing efforts to prepare all children for a successful future, and Petersburg City Public Schools, and also to promote the importance and value of public school education in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Petersburg City Public Schools Board of Education is pleased to proclaim April 7th through the 11th as National Assistant Principals Appreciation Week in recognition of their steadfast commitment to ensuring that every child receives a quality is pleased to proclaim April seventh through the eleventh as National Assistant Principals Appreciation Week and encourage all school and community members to join in thanking all Petersburg City Public Schools Assistant Principals for all they do to educate and care for our students. Adopted this sixteenth day of April 2025. So we have a presentation?
The proclamation, I'm sorry. So move by Mr. Miles, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a presentation filmed for our assistant principals here in Petersburg City Public Schools. Thank you. Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. This is our proclamation, it is a superintendent's recommendation. It is a superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the PCPS proclamation as April is National Counseling Awareness Month as provided. So be it resolved that the following proclamation be adopted, that whereas professional counselors and behavior specialists are employed in the Petersburg City Public Schools to help students successfully reach their full potential. And whereas the American Counseling Association and Virginia Counseling Association have declared the month of April 2025 as Counseling Awareness Month. And whereas professional counseling contributes to the growth and development of people across their lifespan and assists them in achieving their full human educational and career potential. And whereas citizens can utilize the services of professional counselors in schools, colleges, mental health agencies, community agencies, hospitals, rehabilitation centers, private practice, and other delivery settings. And whereas an improved understanding of counseling and how it can address student needs will be beneficial to all. Whereas professional counselors are now considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore be it resolved that April 2025, April 2025 be proclaimed National Counseling Awareness Month and ask all citizens and stakeholders to learn more about the role of counseling in our lives and recognize the essential contributions made by counseling professionals this sixteenth day of April 2025. Adopted this sixteenth day of April 2025.
You heard the recommendation, is there a motion to accept? Move by Ms. Proctor, is there a second? Mrs. Tucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One more, we'll go down next to our information items, Ms. Brown, and your report.
Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members, I will do my quick superintendent's report today. And so if you draw your attention to the screen. Thank you. So I wanted to provide a report to our school board. And we'll start with slide number one, which is our PCPS calendar development planning. I wanted to provide that, as you know, we are working on developing our calendars for 2025 and school years 2026, so twenty-five, twenty-six, and school years twenty-six, twenty-seven. Just as a updating reminder, our calendar survey was sent out to our community and our stakeholders on March twenty-sixth, 2025, and it closed yesterday, April fifteenth. We have put up retractable banners, I hope that you've seen them in schools and throughout the community, that we put up banners with the survey with the Q R code that were placed across the schools and the community to provide everyone an opportunity to provide feedback on the next two years' calendars. To date, we have from yesterday, eight hundred and ninety-seven survey responses were received on the school calendar. And I don't know, I wasn't here prior, but I'm sure that that is a record for Petersburg. So we got lots of engagement and we provided, we removed barriers to ensure that people got it electronically, and we put banners up in schools, and we put them throughout some of our churches and in some of our businesses, is that correct? Across the city of Petersburg. And so we will hold our final calendar committee meeting on April twenty-second, and we will bring our proposed student and staff calendars based on the feedback and the work of the calendar committee on April thirtieth, 2025 during our work session. So as you can see really quickly, in my report, we provided a quick graph that shows you who our stakeholders were, who completed the survey. So if you can look in blue, forty-five point one percent of our employees completed the survey. Forty-four point six percent were parent and guard, were parents and guardians. So there was almost an equal amount of staff and parents. And what you often see in school divisions is that you have lots of staff who provide feedback, but not as many parents. So kudos to our parents out there. Thank you school secretaries and clerks for making sure, thank you principals for making sure that when anyone walked in the door, you asked them to take the survey. Thank you to our team for providing that opportunity, our communications team and the committee, which is very cross-functional with every representation you can think of. And so I wanted to highlight those two major groups that provided it, and that's what you want to see. Employees and parents. We wanted to have more students, but we got five point seven percent were students, three point four were parents who actually work in the school, in the school division. But again, we're excited, and we're excited to bring the iterations in draft so that we can work through the calendars on the April thirtieth work session. Our next update, as you already heard in our earlier presentation with Dr. Jackson, I just want to remind everyone that we have our S O L testing schedule that has been refined. Before, we had a larger window, and we wanted to make sure that parents, the academics team wanted to make sure that our parents were aware because attendance matters during our S O L administration. It matters every day, but this is important. So elementary students who are in grades three through five, you will test through, your testing window will be May first through May fourteenth. Middle school, grade six through eight, May first through May fourteenth. Parents, we need our students in place every day during this testing window. So we want to make sure that the board is aware that we can spread the word. Our spring non-writing S O Ls for term graduates based on their terms is April fifteenth through May thirtieth. And then our semester two non-writing S O Ls in high school grades nine through twelve are May first through May seventh. And so we want to make sure again that parents remember, and our school board helps to spread the word. We want kids to be in bed on time, that they're in school on time and in attendance every day so that they can have the best opportunity to be able to do their best on the S O Ls that will be administered in this time window. My next report is going to talk about our PCPS School Board Office capital improvements. As you know, we have a full plan that includes, that starts with our schools, and the majority of improvements are happening throughout our schools. I just drove down the other day, I was visiting one of our locations, and I saw them painting at Blanford. I was so excited, I stopped in the middle of the road, got out the car, I was on the phone with Dr. Lane, and she said, "Are you driving just to take pictures of the painters?" Because that shows progress. And that made me excited to see that we were already underway based on the, the board approving the February time. So now we are moving, we're also doing simultaneously, we're doing school board capital improvements. So I want to give you a high-level overview of this project. And so project duration will take about twelve weeks. And we started with April seventh, which was the pre-work, okay? And so now it will end June thirtieth, 2025, we will be complete with this building. And so Mr. Martinez, our new PCPS operations person, is overseeing this process, but we wanted to let you know that this is what's going to happen at the school board, and we'll talk a little bit more about what's going to happen because we will be shutting this building down for employees. And we want to make sure that everyone is aware of what the plan is and everyone on the board is clear. So again, our, our school board office improvements have already started with the timeline. And so as a part of this timeline, we're going to be complete by June thirtieth, here is a relocation plan because this building, we need to provide our vendors, who will be coming in to make these improvements, time to be able to get in based on the timeline of things ordered and timeline of June thirtieth. So just take a look. I wanted to provide the board a high-level overview of the different departments. And so as a part of our plan and the work that we are doing with our operations committee, and we have two advisory members, Board Member Dance and Board Member Miles, who serves on that advisory committee. And so we have discussed at length, and I want to bring to the full board, our relocation plan. So as of April twenty-second, we have to start moving our employees in our different departments out to different locations. We will move finance, human resources, and family engagement to Petersburg High School because they need to be on our current network. And so those employees and their teams will be relocated and moved by our team and will be at, will be housed at Petersburg High School during the duration of the timeline that I shared earlier. Homebound testing, as we have about a hundred and fifty students who are homebound, they must be tested outside of Petersburg City Public Schools in a different location. And so we are excited that Gilfield Baptist Church, thank you, Ms. Board Member Dance, for bringing that to the committee. The recommendation is that we will be able to use Gilfield Baptist Church to allow our students homebound to be able to come and be tested as outlined by the V D O E and the Virginia Department of Education. And so they will begin testing at that location between May and June thirtieth of 2025. The next department, so any staff that's reporting to the chief academic officer and the director of technology, they will be moved and assigned to different schools throughout the division where there is space because remember, students are still in school. And so between May first and May thirty-first, they will be assigned to a school. And then from June first to June thirtieth, they will be assigned, we will have those members assigned to Petersburg High School because at that point, students will be out of school and there will be more space. Keeping in mind that we do have the expectation that we have to have Petersburg High School ready to open for kids. And so that cleaning schedule and all of those things will be taken into account. And then for the superintendent's office and office space for some of the executive leadership, we will be housed tentatively at a space called Destiny Services. And so we have that monthly, monthly lease that we're going to be sending for review to our attorney. But we have Destiny Services, we have, we're working to procure that space from May first to May thirty-first because of course, there's not enough space because school is still in session. And so we will have some office space where we will have our superintendent's office and our, some executive leadership members because some of them will be in two places. They'll be at the high school, and they'll also be in that space as well. Our next, as part of my next report, I wanted to update everyone on the school board on our Walnut Hill Elementary School new construction project. Just to remind everyone and update some, that FY twenty-three, so in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Petersburg City Public Schools had applied for a school construction grant to build a new Walnut Hill and Westview Elementary School. We were awarded at the time twenty-seven million dollars by the state for this particular project. And it was originally scoped as a K eight school, but it was supposed to be a K five school with amenities including aquatic center, gymnasium, and auditorium with an estimated total of ninety million dollars overall. We are seeking an amendment at this time and approval to adjust the scope to a K five school, that is, excuse me, pre-K five school, to include Westview and to make adjustments to what amenities will be as a part of that school. Just as an update, me and our team has already talked to March Altman, who is the city manager, and he is aware that, and he also made the recommendation that we move forward with board, board input and approval to remove some of these amenities out of this, um, out of this particular recommendation and that they are fully aware that they will have to, if the, if there is a change in the twenty-seven million that was awarded, if it is reduced by however much, the city is prepared to cover, is that correct, Mr. Martinez? To cover the difference so that we can focus on the most important parts of this particular school. And so we are now planning to meet with the state V D O E because we still have this money. And so we need to move forward sooner rather than later to begin the construction of Walnut Hill. And so we will be meeting this week. And so at this time, we will talk about the scope and we will move forward to confirm the following. The city is confirming that they will be supporting the funding of local share required for Walnut Hill so that we can move forward, representing the difference in the total estimated project and what the state will give us, even if it's minus some money from the twenty-seven million. And so we also have a loan that we got, is that correct, of thirty million. As a part of that, we were awarded a thirty million dollar loan along with the original twenty-seven million dollars, which gives us a grand total of fifty-seven million dollars to go toward Walnut Hill. So I will be writing a letter to the V D O E to say that we are ready to accept the award now that was awarded in twenty twenty-two, and we will be moving forward with the project with tentative project timelines. And then we will begin to procure the design team and construction management team through the R F P process so that we can start this process immediately. I want to definitely clear up because I think there was a misnomer or miscommunication that there were plans drawn up for Walnut Hill. There are not any plans, there were specs that were given to the city, there were high-level specs, but we will have to procure a design team and a construction company so that we can move forward quickly.
I just have a question.
Yes.
I don't recall, maybe other boardrooms recall this, but even here at the time, I'm the board, I'm voting to even move forward. I mean, even though the state got the application, we didn't vote on it.
We, we did vote, we, go ahead.
I thought we did decide to move forward with the elementary school.
Yeah, we talked about it, but we didn't see an application. I mean, even, I mean, it's, I just want to make it clear, I don't think we all signed the application.
No, we never did, it was, it was sent in by Dr. Sterling when she was here.
Thank you.
But it has been turned in.
Oh, yeah, that's what she's talking about.
And she signed it and accepted the funding.
Okay.
And so at this point, the state wants to meet with me and the leadership now, Mr. Martinez and team, because we've already, we've already committed
Good.
to moving forward with Walnut Hill. But we need to be very clear, they want to be very clear that we are going to start this process now and not wait, and that they're going to confirm that it's through the R F P process to procure a design team, and we will be bringing that to the board, we will put out our R F P, we will be bringing to the board a recommendation based on the R F P process for a design team and for the construction management process to ensure that we're following all of the rules and regs related to procurement. But we now have to, I have to submit a letter, and I'll be submitting that letter by Friday to V D O E saying that we are moving forward with Walnut Hill, and the city has confirmed their support financially for us to move forward, but we are to, requested to make some changes to the original grant to maybe, to not include the aquatic center.
So I would ask the chairman, that do we need to take a vote to, because I want to make sure that everyone knows in his own record that we support this. So I don't want to, I don't want to come back haunting us. So, you know, if you can call for a vote, you got my vote.
So it is, it is, okay. Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. It is a recommendation of the superintendent that the school board approve, provide approval for the Petersburg City Public Schools administration to move forward with implementing the Walnut Hill new construction project in alignment with the V D O E requirements, in alignment with the city's commitment to move forward with supporting the Walnut Hill and with the removal of an amenity, aquatic center, in moving forward with implementation.
So move.
Second.
Recommendation move by Mr. Dance, second by Ms. Miles, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Lord, Miss.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And so this process will move fast. So we want to begin to get started in 2025, and we will begin that process and bring back those recommendations. Thank you. So the next one, so phase two. So I wanted to bring to the board phase two, so that was phase one construction project that Dr. Sterling and the administration at the time that applied to the state. Now we have the opportunity now for phase two, board members, to apply for additional funding for a different capital project. And so it cannot be for, hold on a second. It's, it's short, why is it?
Another slide.
It is Petersburg High School.
You're the same thing showed.
Yeah.
So Dr. Mr. Martinez, if we can, you can come to the mic and we can talk about the, but I will go ahead and start the process. We're talking about the School Construction Assistance Program for Phase Two for Petersburg High School's overview. And so at this time, we have an opportunity as a school division to apply for additional funds for Phase Two, but the state has recommended that we focus on the improvement of a secondary building. We have chosen to move forward with Petersburg High School and apply for, we're chosen to move forward with recommending Petersburg High School be the location that we focus on if we're going to submit the grant. But I want to let you all know that we are in the process, I have spoken to March Altman over at the city, and what And what they're saying is they're going to get back to us because the deadline is Friday. They're going to get back to us to let us know if the city, in fact, can, can commit to matching the additional cost that it's going to take for us to renovate Petersburg High School. Because we would then be moving forward with the recommendation to renovate Petersburg High School if we receive funding, but we must have support from the city. So we are not ready to submit today, but we are waiting hopefully by Friday. But we are preparing the grant as if we are ready, in case the city says yes, then we can move forward. So we need to get approval tonight, I guess, again, that if approved with the city's additional support, that we will move forward with applying for the grant for Petersburg High School modernization, if possible. Anything you want to add, Mr. Martinez?
Absolutely, no, this particular grant, the state has about $80 million. And they want us to use it on a secondary school, which is a high school, middle school, right? So we already had an assessment done, to renovate the school was about $90 million. To replace the school was astronomical, a little bit less than $200 million. But we have a strong chance of getting this grant. However, the state will only cover 30%. So localities will only, they have to cover the rest of the 70%, if you will. So we spoke to Mr. Altman and you know, his suggestion is, you know, apply for the grant and we'll go from there. But he did mention that, you know, the local government does have some expenditures that they have to deal with. So we have to submit this grant by April 18th. However, VDOE is not too happy with the district because of the first grant. And we got online with them and we basically told them that we have a new leadership team here. And please help us support that because we definitely want to have this grant. And he's on board, however, he definitely want, his team wants to talk to our leadership team to make sure that we're tracking. And we'll have a discussion with him tomorrow. And to be honest with you, he didn't really seem too ecstatic about us going forward with this next grant, but he's supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. So we at this moment, so we are again prepared to move forward with the grant once we get additional information from the city. But our, but we're going to focus primarily on our Walnut Hill project. But we are ready to move forward if we are, if we're given additional information from the city. And so at this time, school board members, Ms. Board Chair Pritchett, is there anything we need to get from, anything that I need at this moment from school board related to moving forward with this particular grant?
Ms. Brown, you want to go ahead and make the motion to allow the superintendent and her staff to move forward?
Yes, I would, I'd make a motion that we move forward for this grant for the high school to renovate.
Second.
Mr. Danz, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, our last and, my last and final part of my report this evening is just to highlight some great work from my family engagement university work. And so this focuses on our preparing for SOL success. And so this is our curriculum and instruction team was engaged with families and information about things all related to testing, attendance during testing and test-taking strategies. The team also engaged the parents in an SEL activity that involved having the parents write an SOL note and well wishes, well wishes to each one of their students. So that was wonderful. Families walked away with a booklet of information highlighting important information about each SOL and test-taking strategies for them to review at home. Chromebooks were also made available for parents to be able to log in and access different apps to support the learning and review at home. The attendance, the event was attended by 130 parents, students, division staff and community partners and business owners. We had performances from the Westview Welcome Committee, Lakemont Cheerleaders and our Cool Spring Cheerleaders. And then we provided additional resources to our families, hygiene kits provided by the Community Builders Partners, HR team hygiene kit drive, books donated by the community, different community members, academic manipulatives from our CNI team, health and wellness information by our CVHS Crimson Clinic. So parents also received keepsake photos provided by our old snap memories and picnic basket backpacks for raffle prizes as a part of this initiative to drive, to drive participation in our family-friendly activities. So you see those pictures there, thank you to Dr. Lee and the team and our wonderful and amazing students. And as you can see, that is parent engagement, there's an example of parent engagement. That completes the superintendent's report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Number seven B, committee reports, you can see them there, you can read them on your own. New business from board members, our next meeting is next week. We have a joint meeting with city council to present our FY '25, FY '26 budget. And city council at 5:00 PM at the library. And then on April 30th, we will be at Pinasberry High School in the cafeteria at 5:30 for a special meeting for a work session. We will not be taking public comment, it will only be the board working on the calendar. We will have discussion on that, we will wear it on the calendar. Also for new business board members, because it's something that I asked, that we would think about. Let's, can we have a discussion in May to talk about changes? Because our board meetings are too long and people have to go to work the next day. Can we talk about, because city council has started also changing our meetings to 5:00 in the evening at 5. We have a closed session at 4, meetings at 5, meaning that we should be out by 6:00, no more than three hours, we should be gone.
Yeah, I'm good.
Because 9:00 and after 9:00 is just too late.
Yeah, 5:00 is good for me, plus I'm retired, you know, so whatever you make it. Whatever you make at 5:00 with me, you know.
We'll talk about it in May, maybe only in May, we could change to be the hours of 5:00.
Yeah, talk to the people that work.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think that's a very good idea. Great recommendation. Because I'd be tired too.
So we're discussing in our August calendar meeting.
Okay.
Because we can change it then because we need to go on the new calendar. So we're doing it on, you know, on August 30th, I'm sorry. April 30th.
April 30th. Is that going to be at 5:00 also? You already got the time?
We set the time for 5:30 for that one.
Okay.
So after that, we'll take a vote, we can have 5:00. Okay, at this time, is there a motion to adjourn? Don't be so slow.
I just had, I just.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had one comment I'd like to make to Mr. Brown. One of my aunts always gave me poems and I remember.
Poems.
Poems, 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 yeah. I'm sorry, not forms, poems, poetry.
Poetry.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. And one of the poems was about our life and it said, it talked about a teacher. And the poem stated that the best teacher in the world, the greatest teacher in the world is the one that makes you want to learn.
Exactly right.
Motion to adjourn? Move by Ms. Tucker, is there a second? Ms. Proctor, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, adjourn, adjourn, adjourn. Have a great night.